Good evening. I am calling the regular meeting of this University Place City Council for Monday, October 5th, 2020 to order. We are conducting our meeting remotely in compliance with the Special Open Public Meetings Act rules issued by Governor Inslee's emergency order. City Clerk, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Figueroa. Councilmember Keel.
Councilmember Keel, present.
Councilmember Protem Lee.
Councilmember Protem Lee, present.
Councilmember McCloskey. Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming here.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Mayor Protem Worthington here.
Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you.
Before...
Member McCloskey is here.
All right, excellent.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Before we begin our meeting, we have a few special rules I want to go over with everyone. First, participation in public comments and public testimony on the public hearings will be accepted by the following methods. One, written comments or testimonies will continue to be accepted by email. Comments received before the 5:30 deadline will be electronically provided to City Council for their consideration. Two, subject to technological limitations, the council will also accept telephonic comments or testimony by calling the phone number listed on the agenda. One, (509) 342-7253, conference ID number 336497303. For members of the public who are calling in, please be advised, we will take your call in the order received. To ensure order, your microphone will be muted until you have been recognized to speak. You will be recognized by the last four digits of the telephone number you are calling from. At that time, you will be asked to unmute your microphone by pressing star six. Secondly, for City Council members, as a reminder, with our previous meetings, we will continue to use the round robin method in the sequence showing in the speaking and voting chart our city clerk has provided each of you to ensure order of our meeting and that everyone has a chance to speak. And with that, may I ask Councilmember McCloskey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McCloskey. With that, may I call for a motion to approve the agenda as provided? Have you are muted?
This is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move for the approval of the agenda as provided.
Okay, I have a first or I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, my second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as submitted? Okay, hearing none, the approval of the agenda passes unanimously. And our next item on the agenda is public comments. As of 5:30 this evening, we had not received any comments from the public, and my understanding is that there are no, there is no public on our call at this time or on our meeting at this time. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our city manager and council comments. I will ask our city manager, Steve Sugg, to provide his city manager report. Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I wanted to brief you and give you an up-to-date report on the CARES coronavirus funding program that we've been, that you approved back in July. Just as a quick reminder for everyone, this summer, the city received $992,700 of federal funding through the Washington State Department of Commerce to address specific impacts that COVID-19 has had in the City of University Place. To gain an understanding of community needs, city staff, council members, and the Legislative Advisory Commission members met with subject matter experts from other government agencies, nonprofits, and private business owners over the course of three weeks. Information obtained from these sessions guided the development of the city's CARES funding program. We then mailed 1,700 postcards to all licensed businesses announcing the business relief program, and that kicked off the CARES program. So I just wanted to let you know that quite a bit of money has been distributed. As of the end of September, the city has distributed $859,617, consisting of the following: $346,000 in grants to 65 University Place businesses, $48,617 in rental and utility assistance to approximately 30 households. That was done through the Families Unlimited Network that we contracted with, that you approved earlier this year. And then finally, $465,000 for city COVID expenses related to the areas of public works, facilities, police, and information technology. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. I understand we're still having difficulty getting Councilmember Figueroa online. So at this time, we did not excuse him during our roll call, but I would like a motion to excuse Councilmember Figueroa.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move that we excuse, make a motion to excuse Councilmember Figueroa from tonight's meeting if he does not attend.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, my second.
Okay. Should he not be able to log on for this session? Is there any objection to excusing Councilmember Figueroa at this time? Okay, I don't see any, so hopefully we'll keep our fingers crossed he does show up. All right, Councilmember Keel, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Keel. I just wanted to just let board members know that we completed our fall AWC board meeting. A lot of things came out of that. The highlight is that we adopted our legislative priorities for AWC this past time, and I'll get a report to the city clerk that we can make available to everyone. The other thing that we talked about that will be of note to this body is that there's, there's a, there's a challenge of sorts between board members on AWC, and we're trying to see who can get their, who can be the first one to get their entire council with their city credentials. You know, so, you know, the municipal credentials. So I don't know how far along we all are in getting that. I mean, I've got the main one, and I've also got the advanced leaders. And so it would be great if we could, you know, finish in the top 10. That's my goal. You know, of the 25 or so odd people that are on the board. So not a hard goal, I just throw that out there. I will, I'll talk to each of you individually, see where you are, and see if that's a realistic goal or not for us to finish in the top 10. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. Councilmember Protem Lee, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McCloskey, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Councilmember McCloskey, I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fleming, any comments or report outs at this time?
Councilmember Fleming does have one report out to share with the council tonight and with the citizens of University Place. I'm really pleased tonight to share with you that the U.S. Department of Agriculture, aka the USDA, has selected University Place for their trunk, or truck-to-trunk Pierce County Coronavirus Food Relief Distribution Program. That's a mouthful. Oh, cow. So what does that mean for our citizens? So starting next Monday, for the next four Mondays, they're going to be distributing food in our community for 1,100 families per week. And folks can just show up, they can pick up their food. They've chosen the facility on the corner of 67th and Cert, which is known as our church, at 5,067th Avenue North for that distribution site, and it'll be in the parking lot. So share that with friends and those who could benefit with that, but I think that's a big deal for our community. So it's 4,400 individuals and families who will be able to benefit from that program.
Well, thank you for that wonderful news. Councilmember Keel, do you have a quick question?
I did, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I didn't catch the time, the date and the time again.
The date is every Monday. The time, I am not certain, but I believe it begins in the morning, around 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning. And it's for the next four Mondays, Councilmember Keel.
Thank you.
So it's, and just based on the numbers, it's 1,100 bags of groceries per week that they'll be distributing.
Okay. Mayor Protem Worthington, do you have any report outs or comments at this time?
Mayor Protem Worthington does, and it's just, that's wonderful news and appreciate hearing about it. Beyond that, I don't have any further comments or questions.
Okay, I want, I want to thank everyone for their quick and brief report outs. I just wanted to provide an update that last Thursday, I had a Zoom call with the cities and towns. These are the mayors of Pierce County. We were honored to have a briefing by our auditor Julie Anderson, and she provided an update on the current election cycle and debunked some of the misinformation that is being driven or being reported out there regarding the election process, and encouraged each one of us on the city council, as well as our staff, to refer anybody that has questions to the Pierce County Elections website. There's a ton of information and videos about the election process in the state of Washington, and in particular Pierce County, in the hopes of debunking it. But she didn't, did encourage each of us as council members to use our leadership as an opportunity to ensure that our citizens understand the process and are encouraged to get out and vote. So I trust each of you will be doing that in the upcoming weeks as the ballots come out mid-October. And we'll encourage people to vote in this election. They are anticipating about a 90%, 90% return rate, which is really going to overload the staff at the Elections Department. However, they have been aware that it's going to be a highly contested and highly, a high turnout election. So they have geared up and should be able to be able to process that information and get, get the report outs to our citizens in a timely manner. So it was a pleasure to have her on board and at our meeting that evening. Also, as you are aware, we did vote to, to, to remove ourselves from the city of Lakewood as far as our court system goes, but we are, we are all aware that there are some legacy cases that will need to be adjudicated before we are completely done with Lakewood. And as a result, because of our prior judge having been appointed to Superior Court, the city of Lakewood had to appoint a municipal court judge. That judge was Lisa M. Mansfield, and she's been appointed as municipal court judge in September of 2020. And prior to that appointment, she served with the Pierce County Minority Bar Association and as a community outreach vice president on the statewide Board of Women Lawyers. She's also served as Pierce County Bar Association trustee, and most of her career has been spent as a public defender in the criminal and dependency arenas. She's received her Juris Doctorate degree from the University of Washington, yay-go Huskies, and her bachelor's degree from Columbia University in the city of New York. She has been married to her husband of Dan for nearly 15 years. And in 2018, Judge Mansfield received Pierce County's Standing Ovation Board for her work in implementing and promoting Washington's first Safe Babies Court Team. And she's a member of the Rotary 8 and sits on the Community Advisory Board of the University of Washington Tacoma's Legal Pathways Program. So we are well represented here for those legacy cases with having Judge Mansfield that will be presiding, presiding over those cases. So although we are not able to publicly say hello to her due to the fact that we're on, on, in our own homes and stuff, we, I did want to welcome her to the city of University Place as our municipal judge. So with that, with that, that is all council comments and city manager report at this time. I, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mayor Belisi, I move the approval of the consent agenda as, as submitted. This is Mayor Protem Worthington.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, my second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as submitted? Okay, not seeing any. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. So our next item on the agenda is our public hearing, the Larson Lane Development Agreement. And we have a staff report from our chief engineer, Jack Eklund. Mr. Eklund.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Jack Eklund, Director of Engineering. And tonight, I'm bringing to you for public hearing and your consideration, the Larson Lane Development Agreement. This agreement is between the city and the Chambers Bay Professional Center and is associated with the construction of the Larson Lane project. And I'm hoping we can bring up the exhibit, and let's get that up on the screen for everyone. And so, under this agreement, the Chambers Bay Professional Center would convey the needed roadway utility and pedestrian easements to the city for the construction of Larson Lane. This easement, these easement areas are shown. So on this exhibit, the building shown, you can see the white roof, that's the Chambers Bay Professional Center, and the easement area that they would be conveying are these colored hashed areas, both the purple, the yellow, the blue areas. And then, in turn, the city would convey portions of two parcels that they own, or that we own, to the north of the professional center that is shown in this green hashed area. In addition, the city would construct some parking improvements over a portion of the area conveyed to the professional center in order to make up for some parking that's lost during the construction or that would have to be lost to build the Larson Lane road improvements themselves. The values of the properties being transferred and the work being performed has been evaluated and determined to be of equal value. In addition, the approved improvements will benefit the city by promoting and improving economic development. Just to note timelines, and so should this agreement be approved tonight, we would anticipate going out to bid on the construction of Larson Lane later this month. With that, staff recommends approval of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. At this time, are there any council follow-up questions? Councilmember Keel, do you have any follow-up questions?
Thank you, Mayor. No question. I just have a comment, and that is that I'm excited, this is, actually, this is a long time coming. We've been talking about this for a number of years to really finish out, help round out the division that we had for our down, what I'm calling our downtown area. So I'm excited that it's before us, and I will be supporting this.
Okay, Councilmember Protem Lee, do you have any follow-up questions regarding this?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have no follow-up questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McCloskey, do you have any follow-up clarification questions?
Not at this time, Mayor, but I'm concurring with Councilmember Keel on my excitement for this project to come into fruition. As he mentioned, it's been a long time coming, and it's a win for both the business and University Place. So that's even better. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Councilmember Fleming, do you have any clarification or follow-up questions?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Fleming, I don't have any questions, but I think as a footnote, it's important for citizens to realize that the name for this road was not picked capriciously, but was actually picked to honor one of our most, one of our more famous previous residents of University Place, and that was Gary Larson, who was the noted cartoonist that we had. So this is a very exciting project to move this one forward, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Worthington, do you have any follow-up questions regarding this hearing?
Mayor Belisi, Mayor Protem Worthington, no, I don't have any questions at this, at this point. You may have a comment later.
Okay. I want to thank Mr. Eklund for his very thorough report and for the study that we had on it. I understand that we have no public that has phoned in for this meeting at this time, nor have we received any public comment via email. So the public comment portion of this meeting is closed. Now it is time for council comments and for council consideration. So therefore, may I please have a motion regarding this agreement?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move for the approval of the agreement that we've had our public hearing on, and we're now ready for consideration. So move for approval.
Okay, I have a first. Now, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, my second.
Okay, I have a first and second. Are there any council comments in regards to this particular motion? Okay, not seeing any. Yes, Council, Mayor Protem Worthington.
I, so I was just going to make a comment to the extent that I believe that this is a fair transaction. Both parties receive good value, and I think of essentially have equal value from everything we can see. And I look forward to it as the other council members do, and I'm sure. So, and thank you for letting me know the name history. I wasn't aware where Larson Lane came from. That's, that's very interesting. We'll have to, have to see if we can add to that in some way, but thank you, Mayor Fleming, or, excuse me. Councilmember Fleming, all right.
I wanted to be called Far Side.
Yeah. Far Side, right, there we go.
Okay, before we diverge here, are there any additional comments that need to be made regarding this, this public hearing? Okay, not seeing any. I will ask that our city clerk conduct a roll call vote on this particular issue. Councilmember Keel.
I, Councilmember Keel, I.
Councilmember Protem Lee.
Councilmember Protem Lee, hi.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Councilmember McCloskey, I.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming, I.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
And Mayor Protem Worthington, I.
Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi, I.
The motion passes.
We have a unanimous consent here to move this action forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to mention that now our next step, although that's separate from this agreement, we will be coming back to you to do some dedication of the remainder parcels that were the already city-owned parcels as right-of-way. So that'll be a follow-up action before we open up the roadway itself, but that's just some coming attraction, something to look forward to.
We look forward to it. Thank you very much, Mr. Eklund. Okay, our next item is council consideration, as discussed at two previous study sessions. We are talk, we are discussing the alarm permit program, and I'm going to ask our chief, Greg Primo, and Matt Kaser to come forward, and let's continue the discussion and hopefully reach conclusion this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I guess we're going to talk again about the alarm permit and alarm permit program. As we've discussed prior, we're looking at making some changes to the program, and our recommendations are, at this point, a going to an annual permit fee of $40 per year for all permit holders, going to a flat rate of $100 for each false alarm that come in, both to residential and commercial locations. And then just a reminder that all of this, the income from this program are going to go to the Public Safety Fund. And that was all I had, just as a reminder for what the program and the recommendations are at this point. I don't know if Matt has, the city attorney, has some comments to share on that end.
And Matt Kaser, city attorney, I have no additional comments beyond what the chief has added. This has been before the council, twice before, for study, been the subject of extensive discussion. So at this point in time, I have nothing further to add.
Okay. So at this point, are there any council clarification questions or comments regarding, clarification questions regarding the recommendations as proposed? Okay. This is terrible. Who has their hand up? I have one hand up. Councilmember Keel.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to get some clarity on the fees themselves, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what it covers and who's paying for what. The last time we talked, we wanted to, the comment was, we want to make sure that for the fee for this program, that we want to make sure that the people that are using it were covering all of the costs and not have any of those costs be borne by other people that aren't in the program. That was one. And then, and then I had the comment of wanting to talk through for false alarms, making sure that, my interest was making sure that people that were found to have caused a true false alarm, that, that they actually showed the real and true full cost of having officer, officers going on a wild goose chase. That's my term. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, so there are two elements to this program. So the first is the permit program itself. So if you're an alarm user, under the ordinance, you're required to get a permit, and we're recommending a $40 permit fee for that. And what does that cover? It covered running the program. I mean, I don't think there's a specific, we're not separating the false alarm fee from the permit fee to go towards two different areas of this program. The permit fee was intended to cover the cost of responding to these calls. The easiest way that I can maybe give an analogy of it would be your car tabs. If you have a car, you're going to pay your $30 car tabs every year. When you drive that car, that gives you the right to drive that car on the road. If you then decide to make a mistake and then get pulled over for a traffic ticket, you're going to get a fine, which is what I would say is our false alarm fee. So the idea of separating those two is very difficult. I know there's been some discussion of the false alarm fee is helping to pay for, maybe all the, the money for the program should be on the false alarm fee, and that the permit fee would be lower. That, that's certainly an option. I just feel that the, the annual fee we need to have at a point that is sustainable for us to run the, run the program, the staff time, the officer time, and all those types of things that are associated with it, software and hardware and all those things.
Right.
Hopefully that gave you a little bit of an answer there.
It did. So, so the $40 annual fee that people will pay to be a part of this program covers everything, the, the software as well as the staff time. All of that is covered in the $40 annual. All of that is covered in the forty dollar annual fee.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, that's perfect. I mean, that, that I think speaks to the people that are in the program are paying for the program. So that, that's great. I, I love that. So then the second part of my question was the, the, the cost of a false alarm. To my knowledge, I mean, that cost is somewhere in the three hundred, the three hundred and fifty dollar range, right? And, and, and then, but we're only charging a hundred dollars for a false alarm. So I mean, that's, that's really a third of, of what it costs us. So basically, what's happening is that I think, in my view, the rest of the citizens are covering that other two-thirds, right? Because we're, we're paying for those officers out of our regular budget. But then when there's a false alarm, then the person that, the culprit pays a hundred dollars toward that. And the other two hundred dollars, the rest of the whole community is paying for that. And that's, that's where I'm a little sideways, right? So we, we, we talk about, you know, making sure that we have, you know, real cost and we're covering all of our costs. And I've raised the fact that we're kind of upside down in our policing already. And to me, this exacerbates the problem, right? And knowingly, I mean, we know that that's not the cost, and we're going to still say, yeah, that's what we're going to charge people. And, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. Even though, you know, you, you can make it, oh, that's a lot of money. Well, yeah, it's a lot of money. Because that's what it costs us to send officers out for a group on a wild goose chase. So let's make sure we don't do that. And, and so I think there needs to be some kind of a sting for the people that have true false alarms. So anyway, that's my.
If I can give a, a little bit of a response to that too, and maybe a different way of thinking about it, is the forty dollar permit fee is almost like an insurance fee. In the sense of, as, as an insurance charge, we're all kind of paying for other people's mistakes in a way. The idea that the forty dollar permit, because if we're charging three hundred or three fifty, it's going to be a challenge to get, I mean, I think that a lot of people will have a hard time with that high of a rate. I'm not saying that it's not undoable, but, you know.
Okay.
Not sure if that's, was that a question?
No, that's, Javier's got his mic open.
Oh, okay. So again, I kind of look at it in, in that respect, that the forty dollar fee, because it's not an essential service of the police department to do alarm fees or alarm response. You know, there's some jurisdictions in the United States that police departments don't respond, that city councils have looked at the data and said, boy, ninety-nine percent of these are false. We're not going to have police departments respond at all unless you have a security guard or somebody else go to the alarm and verify that it's an actual crime. And in University Place, I think we've taken a different stance in terms of a level of service, and some of that cost, I think, gets pushed just to be a part of the program, to have the availability of the officer come. So you're paying forty dollars a year with that assurance that when my alarm goes off, nine-one-one will get called and an officer will respond when they are available to respond. I, I, I can see your point for sure, that they might be subsidizing a little bit based on the fee only being a hundred dollars. And we've looked at the cost and, and associated the cost of response at closer to three hundred or three hundred and fifty dollars. So I, it's a valid point for sure.
Okay, Councilmember McCloskey, you had a clarification, question or concern?
Thank you, Mayor. I look at this as mainly a behavior change model. The forty dollar fee as the sustainability of the program. And whether it's a twenty-five dollar fee, like a parking fee, no one wants to pay that. It hurts, it stings, because it's air money. You know, it's, it's a mistake. We also want to encourage our citizens to alarm up, and a high rate of a three hundred and fifty dollar fine will may preclude people from signing up and alarming. So in the behavioral change model that I see that Chief Primo has set up, the even whatever nominal fee we have, which is now a hundred dollars, I think that's going to provide enough incentives so that we see the false alarm go down. But yet we still have that built-in sustainability of the program, because that is really our end goal, to see the false alarms going down and not to be punitive. A gentle reminder, and if you have nine false alarms, that's almost a thousand dollars. I think you may reconsider how you operate your, your alarm system in, in regards to that. So I like the built-in sustainability component that means it sustains over time. And this is not only about our permitting, but it's also about our animal licensing program as well, which I think would also encourage more pet owners, if they had a easier option online, to license their pets and to get gentle reminders in regards to that. So the, the other comment that, that I had, that the chief went over with me earlier this morning through email, was about our government entities that are exempt. And so I, I understand there's probably, there's might be a gentleman's agreement between different, you know, government agencies, because they are, you know, citizens are taxed in each entity for services rendered that, you know, we, we may not want to have a permit fees in regards to that. But, but I don't know, I would still, you know, it's not a deal breaker for me as far as the, this alarm permit, permitting system goes. But I, I'm just the curiosity of the entities in our city that we have that don't have a permitting fees, and then what sort of collaborative relationship that they, they give to us as well. So that's all my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCloskey. Councilmember Protem Lee, you had some comments?
Yes, Councilmember Protem Lee, thank you, chief, for your presentation. You, there's still the option of appeal, correct, in the process? So that.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Worthington, you had some comments or clarifications? You are muted, sir.
Comments, and thank you, Mayor Belisi. Mayor Protem Worthington here. So from my perspective, I think the forty dollar annual fee is an appropriate amount. It's in, it's in the neighborhood of what's in our neighborhood, and meaning the other jurisdictions around us are, are paying or charging a similar fee for a similar service. And that does generate some revenue that can help our police operation as well. But it primarily pays for the cost of this program with its annual fees and its overhead expenses. That's a bit of a quandary over the cost of response. Three hundred dollars approximately is what we've recently discovered is the cost for an officer to respond to a alarm call. And when it's a false alarm, that officer has actually, is, is not available, or she's not available to do whatever it is, they would have done without that call. And in some cases, they're stepping away from an active event that is a lower priority in order to respond. So there is, there is an impact to the effectiveness of our police officers as they respond to false alarms. We should be charging for that, to help people modify their behaviors, Councilmember McCloskey talked about. If it's a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, or three hundred, I find that I'm, I'm still sort of searching for the right number. In my mind, it's at least a hundred dollars. I also recognize, as Councilmember McCloskey said, and agree, that there is some public good in having people alarm their homes, that it discourages bad actors, and that we should do within reasonable things, what we can, to allow that or help that happen. But we shouldn't carry the, the burden of that, of those costs associated with it alone, of, in terms of response. So, you know, I think there's a value in public good. I would step away from the three hundred dollar charge. But I'm at least at a hundred. So in any case, more discussion, I suspect.
Okay, before I go to Councilmember Fleming, I want to welcome Councilmember Figaroa to our meeting. He did log in here midway through our discussion here. So welcome. I will get to you in a moment, Mr. Figaroa. Uh, Councilmember Fleming, you had some comments or concerns?
I do, Madam Mayor, thank you. First, I, I want to thank the chief and, and our city attorney for the work they have done on really attempting to address all the questions that the council has had and, and bring some clarity to what started out to be somewhat foggyness to what we were attempting to do with this. So, you know, please accept that. Thanks. You know, and I also think that each council member who's spoken so far has made some very compelling arguments as to why we should move forward with this. And I think in the end, I will be the minority vote on this one, and I'm okay with that too. But, you know, where I'm, I'm stuck, I'm hung up, and I probably can't get off of it, is that when I look at what we're trying to do here, yes, we're trying to change behavior, but we're charging the majority of our citizens for the bad behavior of a few. And, and in my head, I just wrestle with that one. I have a hard time with that. It took me time to get to the realization that, yep, we live in the 21st century, and therefore we have to upgrade the system that we have to make it more responsive and certainly better tracking. And yes, we need to cover the cost for that. But, you know, without a sunset clause or some clause in this law to compel the council to come back and review it within whatever reasonable time that may be. At the end of the day, it's like any other law that has a tax or a fee, they run on forever, and we end up recovering the cost. In this case, if we go five years, we'll cover five times the cost of this system. And then it goes on indefinitely. So for those reasons, I can't support this. But I certainly appreciate where, what we're trying to do and where we're trying to get to. So, my comments. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember, Member Figaroa, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to make regarding the alarm permit program?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make it simple since I didn't get to hear the other council members' comments. And I do appreciate that because I've been known to change my mind after listening to their testimony. But I'll go back to my previous statement in the last study session. That is, I, I don't believe that we should be subsidizing anyone for their service. I understand about the safety. I heard a little bit about the safety and the goodwill, and we want to keep our, the, provide the, our citizens with a way to have an alarm. But I, I don't believe that, I believe that that's above and beyond the government's requirement, essential services to be done by the, by the city. And I don't believe that we should be subsidizing that, that at all. Because anything other than them paying what they're actually should be paying for is being subsidized by other taxpayers that don't have a alarm system or chose not to have an alarm system. And it's no different than when we cut out the youth programs and senior programs, because, you know, we didn't want to subsidize that. And I just believe that if we're going to have it, I, I, I like the, I like the fact that we can provide it at a wholesale value at cost only. I do believe that we should not be making a profit on it. I do believe that if we can provide a wholesale value, it's just like we do other services, that gives them the opportunity to, our citizens, the opportunity to safeguard their, their residences, that we should be okay with that. But I don't think that we should be in, in the, in the subsidizing law, excuse me, alarm systems. I mean, the private sector has that. If people want that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Figaroa. Councilmember Keel? You are muted.
I, no, I, I am. Thank you, Mayor. So just listening to the last two comments of Councilmembers Fleming and Figaroa, I, my understanding, and I, and I said that in my comment before, chief, is that the forty dollars that people pay, and this, that's, the forty dollars is only for the people that are signed up in the program. When you sign up in the program and you have an alarm, you pay forty dollars. And that forty dollars covers the cost of the software as well as the, the overhead for the people, the staff. Okay?
Correct.
And, okay, great. Everything. And, and so the other thing that my understanding is, is that software cost is every, is an annual cost. So it's not a, it's not a one-time, we bought the software and we don't pay anything else. There, it's, that cost comes up every year. So there's no way that we're going to pay for it, collect it one year, and then we're, we're collecting all the things we collect the next years is more than what we pay. We, what we collect, we pay every year for that software. So there's, there's no banking of the money.
Right.
So, and, and, and I, I think one council member was concerned about banking, you know, having collected money that we had paid for five times over again. So that, that's not happening. The only part that I see that is where other people are subsidizing, people that aren't using the system are subsidizing the cost for people that are using the system, is in the, the false alarm. It, it could, because the false alarm, it, it costs us three hundred dollars, three fifty, or whatever the number is. And the people that are using it that are causing the false alarm, that actually, actually have the bad behavior, when we show that they're having bad behavior, then all we're charging them is a hundred dollars. And the other two hundred dollars is being paid for by people that aren't using the system. So that is the only piece that, that we're, where we got subsidy. So, Mayor, at, at some point in time, I, I'd like to propose an amendment to what's on before us. And that amendment would be that we change that fee to three hundred dollars, to whatever the cost is for, for, for an officer's phone, whenever it's appropriate.
We can get to that when we go for consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So chief, now that Councilmember Kent has raised an interesting question, I, I'm looking for some clarification. So I thought originally we were purchasing software to upgrade our system in the alarm business. So it wasn't like a one-time-only fee and a, whatever that legacy was, it was done and gone. I'm hearing that we won't be purchasing software. We're going to be leasing software year to year. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we purchase, it's, I wouldn't even say we, it's a third-party company that we utilize their software, and we pay annually for that use of that software. So they provide us customer service support, IT support to utilize their software.
Is that, is that fee fixed, or does it, does it float year to year?
It, it does have, I think, a built-in escalator, like one or two percent, I believe, is what it's at. Matt might have that information, but it's, it's set at that, and then it goes up every three to five years, I believe.
Every three to five years or every year?
Nah, I can't, I don't recall off the top of my head. I know that there's a built-in increase, I think annually, and then we revisit the contract at three years or five years. I, I'm, I'm going off the top of my head from several months ago.
Is there a cap on that?
Yeah, in terms of the annual increase?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a cap on it.
What is it?
I think that's the one or two percent increase every year. Matt, are you able to find it?
Right, but does it, okay, if we're increasing one to two percent annually, does it cap out somewhere where it will stay at that? Or does it continue to escalate annually?
I think we renegotiate after three or five years, then we have to sign another agreement with them, I think, if I recall.
I, I'm in the process of trying to find it right now in response to the questioning.
Yeah. If the, the software is a, a system that we, we chose because it gave us five different modules that we can utilize. So this is where Councilmember McCloskey was talking about as well, is we're able to use it for animal control. It's going to allow people to go online and do their permitting for animal control as well as the alarm permitting. And then we have other modules that other city departments. And then we have other modules that other city departments will be able to utilize. So it was one of the reasons we chose this system.
Are those additional fees then for those modules?
No, that was we we negotiated. This is the basically their entry level for the software as you get five modules for it. So we were able to negotiate for this uh this annual fee for that amount of modules.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
May I interrupt just for a second, please? Mayor.
Sure, Councilmember Figueroa.
I'm on my on the uh city phone, and I don't have my regular uh raise the hand and so forth. So if you see my hand on there, speak fast. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Count uh Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Bellici. So um couple of things. Uh, first off, Chief, um in our last meeting, you had a the new number for us for the cost of a a call from our police department for responding to an alarm. What was that number?
It was three hundred and seven dollars and fifty three cents.
Okay, three oh seven fifty three. We've had a couple of different numbers floating around. I just wanted to establish what the number was so we could all be on the same page, whatever page that may be. Uh, so, uh, great. And then uh, the uh the annual charge for for maintenance all makes sense uh through this. The the fact is, over the course of the discussion and one or two other things, I don't I want to come back and raise my issue again and not right now. Thank you. Oh, I excuse me, I know what it was. Yeah, that was it. So we have thirty five hundred uh subscribers, between three thousand and thirty five hundred subscribers to alarm alarm monitoring. Some of those are businesses. Most of those are residences. We have something like ten thousand five hundred households in our community. So we have about roughly a little less than a third of our community uses uh alarms. When we talk about it being subsidized, when an officer responds and we spend the three hundred and seven dollars and whatever it was, fifty three cents, a third of that is being absorbed, I suppose, by the alarm user. But two thirds of that is being subsidized by the people that don't have alarms. They are carrying two thirds of the cost of that response that we don't collect on. Uh, and I just uh in some ways, the discussion has been like everybody has an alarm. Not everyone does. So uh that I think is also a point. This is a a segment of the population, not the whole pocket population that uh pays this. And it's something that is frankly voluntary. They can or cannot have an alarm system as they choose. And as I said earlier, it is it is, I think, in the public good that people have alarms. It discourages bad actors. And uh I'm I'm certainly interested in helping to encourage that via uh as long as it pays its own freight on the daily basis. Thank you.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to this, I had not heard the testimony about, maybe I did and didn't don't recall, but the escalating factor of the uh on the annual basis, if the forty dollars we're talking about, you know, I know about the three hundred or the one hundred, that's one one side of the equation. The other one is the forty dollars. Are we charging the appropriate fee? Uh, I thought that the forty dollars was to cover the cost. However, if it goes up every year, who's eating the cost, Chief, on on the escalators? And if if we're not, then are we asking uh or is the fee of forty dollars being raised every year when when the escalator escalator goes up?
No, we're we're not. I I would not recommend that we're looking at raising the fee every year at at any rate. It would certainly be something that the council maybe looks at like they did every ten years that we've done the last time that we're looking at the the fees.
Well, how would how would who's going to pay? Are you talking about we we subsidize the the uh the cost of the system?
So looking probably back, it's the first study session uh where we tried to break down the actual cost of everything. The so we have the software system. The annual cost right now is about sixteen thousand dollars a year. The police, our administrative staff cost roughly is in the twenty five to three thousand dollar range that they spend working on this. We have some other minor, I would say, hardware costs in terms of postage and paper and and those types of things. Then you have some finance and clerk staff time that gets factored in there. Um, and then you have officer time. So the idea of what what component full cost recovery based on the permit, I think it's very hard to equate, even the three hundred and seven dollars and fifty three cents. We looked at that and said, here's the cost of the full cost of your police department, and here's the number of calls for service that we have, and came up with a cost per call that those officers respond to. Now, that call could be an alarm call. That call could be the suspicious person standing out panhandling uh in front of a store. It could be a multitude of things, right? So it's just an idea of get you uh give it everybody an idea of what it costs per call, then the City of University Place under the current cost for the police department and the current number of calls that we have. The idea when we first had this conversation about the permit program and the cost or the amount for that permit alone was the idea is that this is a voluntary program for citizens who want to have an alarm. What is the rate that they should be paying for that service? Because I think a few of the council members have pointed out, this is not an essential function of the police department. This is a this is an optional thing that happens. There's some agencies that don't respond to alarms at all. Other agencies within this county respond to alarms only after two trips of an alarm has gone off. Some require a subscriber or a third party to respond. In University Place, we have a higher level of service. And so because we have that higher level of service, we felt that that forty dollar permit fee that people are voluntarily deciding to get an alarm, and they're paying for that potential service. It's seeing it as what is the cost, that permit fee for that potential response? And then if you have a false response, you get fined for not handling your alarm system appropriately. The forty dollars pays for the assurance that an officer will respond. If there is a burglary, then you don't get charged anything. You paid that forty dollars for that alarm response. I hope I answered. I know it was a little bit longer of an answer than you were probably looking for.
Uh, now you didn't answer it. Uh, the the forty dollars is an annual fee. Uh, my understanding that the cost of the system is going to go up every year by one or two percent.
Right.
No.
I see Matt shake. No.
While you guys were talking, I had the opportunity to locate um the underlying contract. It is for a initial five year term. Um, the annual rate over the course of the five year term is sixteen thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars and no sense. There is a renewal option towards the out year in the term fall, which would trigger following automatic renewal. But the way I'm reading the contract, that sixteen thousand and change figure is the annual subscription fee.
Okay, it does not change.
That's how I'm reading it.
Okay, then I withdraw my my questioning.
Okay, um, we are um starting to get intrude on our um next, our study session items. Are there any other clarifications at this time that are needed? Okay, not seeing any. May I have a the council consideration or motion to consider the um alarm permit program?
Mayor Bellici, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move for consideration of the alarm permit program, the motion to approve that program.
I would like to note that there are no public, there were no public emails received, nor are there any public currently on our list of attendees. Okay, do I have a second on this motion?
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Keel, I second the motion.
Okay. All right, um, do we have any council discussion regarding this issue? Councilmember Keel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment uh to the motion, and that is that we charge um the the going rate, whether how we calculate uh the cost that we uh the full cost of an officer response to a false alarm.
So I have a I have a motion and a second. Council discussion.
Yes, thank thank you, um, Mayor. Uh, I I I think I I tried to make my point uh during the the uh clarification, but to just to drive it home even further this time is we're all concerned about other people that aren't using the service um subsidizing the the one third of our community that is using the service. And that's one. Second thing is we already know that um the cost for policing in UP we're upside down already, um, just in general. And 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 we're struggling, we're trying to figure out ways to come up with dollars to to pay for just the basic service. Uh, my belief is is that uh by not charging the full rate of a false alarm, not, you know, this is a real alarm, come save me. You know, those we respond to with no extra cost. We're talking about a true false alarm that takes officers away from other work. Uh, by not fully charging that for people, I think we it makes us even more upside down uh in our policing. So I urge um my council members to really support this amendment.
Councilmember Fleming, you have your hand raised.
I do, Madam Mayor, because that comment just created all kinds of confusion in my head. My understanding is if you don't have an alarm, you don't pay. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Correct.
So I'm I'm a little bit perplexed by the comment that says those who don't have alarms are going to subsidize those who do on a false alarm. If I understood the proposal before us, it's that those who have it will pay, those who don't, don't. And that's how we move this forward. It's is am I off track on that one?
So so can I try to explain?
Yeah, Councilmember Keel.
So what I'm saying is that when you when you have a false alarm, we're already paying for the officers. They're they're getting paid by the general public already. Everybody in the city pays for that for an officer on the street. Because that's a part of what we're paying for. When that and that officer's doing their work, normal everyday work, when a when alarm, when they respond to an alarm, the people that are paying the the fee for the alarm, they're paying the forty dollars, they get they get the person to respond. But if it's a false alarm, then the person that that calls the false alarm pays a hundred dollars for that false alarm. Well, the real cost for that officer responding is three hundred dollars. So if I'm the user of the system and I paid a hundred dollars, where does that other two hundred dollars come from? The other two hundred dollars is covered by the system, the bigger system, which everybody in the city is paying for. That's how everybody else's system pays for it.
Remember, Keel, are you implying then that the citizens of our community that pay taxes across the board, that that money that they're paying doesn't go for any other services?
No, I'm saying I'm saying that the city that they're paying for goes for goes for the services for the policing, yes. So uh we're we're paying that police officer. We're paying for that police officer three hundred dollars. I mean, that's the the charge and cost. That other wasted time that that officer is burning through is being covered by the rest of the citizens. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So I guess I since I have the floor, I would I would politely disagree and say that as citizens, we all pay taxes for the services that are rendered in our community. Totally get that picture, and those those services aren't specific. They are general for what we a as a government do to provide services to the community. I see this cost of a hundred dollars that's before us, as Councilmember McCluskey had pointed out earlier. You know, it it's it's we're changing behavior. We're not here to pound people into the ground with financial stuff. We're here to change behavior, I hope. Um, and if they have one, that's a hundred bucks. I mean, I don't know a lot of people who like to waste a hundred dollars. Uh, but that, in my mind, is a lot of money for some folks. If they have two, three, or as Councilmember McCluskey had said, if they get ten, that's a thousand dollars. That's a pretty good deterrent at that point. Or maybe we have some kind of an escalator, a hundred dollars for your first one, two hundred for your second, or something like that. But this idea of let's just tax and fee everyone we can for every opportunity. I I'm I'm struggling with that one. So um I know it's a conversation for another time, and I'll back off the uh the podium here, but I I think what we have is is a good start, and I think maybe we come back and look at it at another time. And if, to your point, it's not deterring and it's not changing behavior, then we have that conversation of the three hundred dollars. But I think this is a good starting point, I think, for our citizens. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for the
You're welcome. Um, before I go to Councilmember Figueroa, who raised his hand, and and go back to uh Councilmember Keel, I'd like to weigh in on this. Unfortunately, uh, Councilmember Keel, I'm not going to be able to support this um your your amendment strictly because we have an appeals process. And based on our history, the majority of the false alarm calls that um are received or our officers go out on um are are appealed. And we have had that discretion to um allow them to to get out of that um that finding process. Um, I think a hundred dollars does serve as a deterrent and and an education process to um get those that are repeat offenders um to actually have some consideration for either the training or the setup of their system or whatever. But to do the three hundred um right off the bat, and it's going to end up getting appealed anyway, I think is is overstepping. I would be much more interested if in a year or two, we re revisited our our policy to see, number one, are our fees allowing um alarm owners to to register if they if they're going through that process? And number two, looking at our appeals numbers and the uh the false alarms to see if, in fact, the the history has shown that it's decreasing, which is the intent of this thing. But to go right out on the bat at three at at the cost of a police officer, I think, is um an overreach at this point. Um, let's let's see what this current proposal that the police chief has and the appeals process as we have it set up and move forward. What we're trying to do is cover the initial cost of the staff time to administer the program and to pay for the alarm um hardware or the software that's needed um to do this. And we have done that with a forty dollar fee. That's the intent. If we're trying to cover our costs of police services on the fines and fees, I think we're sorely misleading the public and thinking that those those fees are going to to amount to anything that will be usable. Any excess above and beyond the forty dollar fee goes into the public service fund and will be be utilized in a budgetary process, potentially for extra overtime or emphasis patrols that benefit the entire um community as far as our policing goes. So with that said, I I cannot support this this amendment. Um, Councilmember Figueroa, you had some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as closing remarks for me, and that is that we, I have heard uh throughout the last few years, and if not a decade, how we don't have enough uh law enforcement to uh for public safety. Matter of fact, so much that we have uh added a detective, we've added a police officer, we've added to the budget uh uh to accommodate more police officers because of the requirement and the needs. And with the population growing, uh, we see the need for even more. As uh Councilmember Keel mentioned, uh, the uh the cost is is continuing to, and we're trying to figure out how are we going to continue to cover the cost. But most importantly, we seem to always be talking about not having enough police officers out there uh in protecting the the uh the public. Matter of fact, here recently, we're talking about cameras uh around the schools because it takes a uh we don't have enough police officers out there to cover uh what's going on in public safety around the schools. So getting to the point of why should we uh have uh urgent public So getting to the point of why should we uh, have uh, urgent public safety matters uh, uh, not taking care about our police force to go and take care of a false alarm? People need to be responsible and accountable. We're not in a behavior, we're not a social program. We're a government uh, that we need to run like a business, and we're not in the be- in the behavior uh, business. And we're not here to, uh, if we're gonna do that, uh, and s- and subsidize what I consider subsidizing false, false alarms, as it is, we're already given that premium on, on our service, like the chief said. A lot of cities don't do this. A lot of cities don't even reply uh, to alarms. And so we're already providing quite a bit more that it is spread out among the taxpayer payers. And I think that to go to, to the point of false alarms, I think that they need to pay, whether it's three, one hundred or three hundred dollars, whatever it is, that they need to pay. And, and uh, and uh, and if it's a thousand times, well, shame on them. Uh, we're not here for behavior or social programs. Uh, and so I really believe, and uh, as for the record, I'm not sure how this is gonna go, I really think that we have to stop subsidizing other, otherwise uh, we can, this sets the precedent for other uh, you know, people want, well, my gate, uh, I don't, uh, I have a electronic gate, so I lose my key, so I need the law enforcement to come and, and open up my gate. You know, where does it all stop? Uh, so I, I think at some point, we, we, we need to, we need to make the correction here and stop subsidizing additional services like this. Thank you.
Okay. May I remind council that we're approximately twenty minutes behind on our schedule, and we do have a hefty schedule? With that being said, do you have, um, Councilmember Keel, do you have some short comments before I ask for a vote on your amendment?
Uh, yeah, I, I have a comment, I hope it's short. Um, I, I would just say that I, I think the, and if I'm looking at non-heads here, I think the majority of the council here is misunderstanding of what I'm saying. I'm not saying that I'm trying to set up these fees as to try to pay for all policing in the city. That's not it. I'm saying that it, it is a fee for misbehavior, misuse. And I do understand that most of our uh, false alarms um, are overturned, and that's great, because we should only make them really be fa- uh, false alarms if they're really false alarms. I mean, that's what the appeal process is for. And I think it's great that for those very few that still end up being false alarms after they've been appealed, those are the ones that should carry the full cost of the officers. Okay? Because y- yes, I know we all pay taxes and we pay for all of the services, but for the false alarm, narrow it down to that, that officer is being taken away from other work because of a false alarm. And it, and it, and if it's a true false alarm, after it's been mitigated, then the person, I think, should be paying for that. Because if they don't, then the rest of the citizens are paying for that, even though that we, we're not paying for the false alarm, we should be paying for real work that should be going on. So uh, a- and if we can't understand that concept, then I'm real nervous about our ability to really understand how we're gonna fix all of our stuff in this city, because it, that, that, to me, is, is just so basic about what we talk about, about making sure that the cost that incurred is, is borne by the people that actually could cause the cost to happen, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. Councilmember McCloskey? You're, you're muted, ma'am.
How about now? Thanks for the reminder. Well, I certainly take exception to what Councilmember Keel just said about uh, having um, everything to be cost recovery in, in a government agency that our citizens pay uh, in several different facets. Uh, and, and I also um, understand cost recovery, I'm from a business model, and even in the business model, there is sometimes not even full cost recovery. You uh, for example, in-store promotions to get people in so they can do ancillary sales to make up the bottom line. So it's not always looking at cost recovery, bottom line analysis. And our rules and regulations and our laws are certainly behavior uh, change models to get people to do the right thing, put up the right fence in, in, with our regulations and our rules so that it will be safe. And certainly our police, when they ticket someone, is a behavioral change model. We don't want them to speed through certain areas of town such as our schools, school zones. And I can go on and on about how government changes behavior over time. So, and I think that as Councilmember Fleming indicated that we can review this, see how it works, and if it doesn't work, we can go into uh, Councilmember Keel's cost recovery model, but right in the initial out the gate, front, they're permitting to an onerous uh, uh, false alarm fees. I, I think this is a great middle, middle road to uh, to approach this change that we're incorporating into the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, with that, I think we pretty well discussed the issues on this. Um, I am going to ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on the amendment as it stands, which would be to modify the um, the false alarm fee from the current hundred dollars to Kent Keel's um, cost recovery three hundred dollar um, amount. Councilmember Figaroa?
Yay.
Councilmember Keel?
Aye.
Councilmember Proton Lee?
Councilmember Proton Lee, nay.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, nay.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, nay.
Mayor Proton Worthington?
Mayor Proton Worthington, aye.
And Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, nay.
The motion fails.
Okay, the amendment fails. We are now on to the original motion for consideration. Um, City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote? Councilmember Figaroa? Councilmember Keel?
Nay.
Councilmember Proton Lee?
Councilmember Proton Lee, yea, yes.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, yeah.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, no.
Mayor Proton Worthington?
Mayor Proton Worthington, aye.
And Mayor Belisi?
Aye.
Mo- motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our study session on, finally, on flash votes survey results. And with that, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Councilmember uh, Mayor Proton Worthington. Hopefully you get this done in a very timely manner.
We'll, uh, we'll give it a shot, and I promise it won't be more than two hours.
Thank you.
Um, so the, the big moment is here, we, we get to talk about the flash vote results, and uh, as in doing that, I want to make sure and uh, thank uh, and point out the, my fellow committee members, I happen to be uh, chair for the uh, Vision 2040 uh, uh, campaign, or Imagine 2040 campaign, probably should get the campaign name right. Uh, and uh, but with me uh, was also, is also uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Denise McCloskey and Councilmember Kent Keel. And uh, we worked with some very, uh, very valuable staff that helped us quite a bit with uh, uh, Marisa Craig, Lisa Petert, uh, Linda Sees, and uh, Becky Mcath, and uh, excuse me, I, we had a member of the planning division, and I'm sorry, her name escapes me at the moment, I'll see if I can't uh, look that up in short order. Um, but uh, we have for you tonight a PowerPoint that will review uh, our findings. And at the end of that, we have a discussion as well. Um, because uh, as I'll point out towards the end, uh, we had uh, a variety of impacts from the, during the pandemic, or from the pandemic we're still in. And that also impacted our ability to uh, complete things. But uh, with that, I'm going to ask for, I think Linda may be the one to put up the PowerPoint, if we're ready for that. And uh, all right. So uh, off we go. And with our first slide, uh, let's, let's, we'll move to the next slide, please, next slide, please. So what started us was Resolution 866, and in that resolution, we basically were given the mission to develop a new vision uh, for the community in its coming twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth anniversary this year. This goes back to 2019, as you all recall. Um, and um, we had our subcommittee working with that message, we looked for a variety of ways to help carry that out. Uh, this was a, what we've uh, envisioned, or what we undertook was a community-wide effort um, to determine what uh, university should look, University Place should look like in 2045, and uh, look for ways to help share that vision, share individuals' ideas of what that future community can look like, be like, uh, what would be important to. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the things, we used a variety of tools, one of them was uh, what we referred to as the imagination galleries, we kicked things off. And in it, we did a, a little bit of a retrospective of the community and what it looked like some twenty-five years ago, uh, when I was being formed, and some of the key events that had taken place over that length of time. We used that in the imagination gallery to help spark people's interest, help get them thinking about what could be and what, uh, and what has changed as well. It was also a way for us to commemorate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Magician. We had other things we did as well. During duck days, for example, we brought in our community ambassadors, uh, and essentially those ambassadors were our, our planning commission, our uh, members, the members, volunteer members uh, from our Public Safety Commission, from the Parkston Commission, and uh, uh, excuse me, and from uh, oh, feel like I'm missing one of the commission, but uh, in any case, from the various commissions that we have in the community. Um, we had helped them get familiar with the details of many of the activities the city has underway and some of its uh, history and key decision points to prepare them. And then we're in the Imagine Gallery for Duck Days, along with myself and other staff, or staff members and other elected officials as well. Um, we uh, with that training, we were able to uh, help capture some thoughts and get people's impressions. We also did outreach during the National Night Out last year, and uh, uh, the uh, we worked with uh, a variety of uh, survey tools, and one of those key survey tools was flash vote, which we'll talk quite a bit about in just a moment. Um, the PSRC survey that you see noted on this slide, by the way, is a survey that was published in 2019 by the Puget Sound Regional Council that helped uh, show how people in Puget Sound area were looking at their quality of life and what some of the key issues were. And our intent was to use that as a benchmark to see where University Place came in next to that. Uh, and uh, let's see. Um, next slide, please. The uh, uh, flash vote itself was a, a great signup opportunity in our community. It was uh, the, basically, we said, if you have a minute, help your local government, because it really was identified as a way for people using their smartphones, their computers, even their landlines, uh, to respond to three survey questions, sometimes five. And it would take really no more than a minute or two, uh, and would give their impressions. What was really uh, important, I think, is it also gave them an opportunity to write some detailed comments. And tonight, you'll have a sample of some of those comments. Uh, also tomorrow, you'll have a copy of all the comments. Um, the survey, uh, in all, we had five hundred and fifteen people sign up, and they received our uh, various surveys, seven surveys in total, as you'll see. Of those five fifteen, four hundred and twenty-eight lived in U P, and eighty-seven didn't provide an address, so they may have been in University Place, or they may have been somewhere else in the county. But nonetheless, if you remember back when we were doing our park survey work roughly six or seven months ago, I guess it's more like nine, uh, we uh, heard how if a number in a survey was getting over about four hundred, that number was getting into some very high statistically valid uh, likelihoods. And so uh, we were well in that territory, is my point there. Next slide, please. So uh, with duck days and with National Night Out, here's some pictures of how we did that outreach. Oh, and I need to mention also in that top uh, right corner, you'll see our city manager who was uh, Steve Sugg, who was working the uh, uh, kind of the, by the fireplace in uh, the atrium uh, a number of days, getting people's comments, getting them signed up with flash vote. We also had some other volunteers in the, in the information booth, which was a great source of information, or rather, uh, signups for us as well. And uh, and so it's uh, good to remember some of the activities we had then. And this is also a time when people could stand next to each other without having to worry, uh, seems like a distant time now. Uh, next slide, please. So in the flash vote uh, history here, we ended up uh, sending out surveys from July tenth, 2019, to, our last survey was February twenty-sixth, 2020. We uh, in total, had eight surveys, and they asked such things about initially, is the village of Chambers Bay? They asked about parks and economic development. Uh, these were themes for each survey, quality of life, emergency preparedness, housing, public safety, and working in community. And uh, there, there was a number of uh, questions about, uh, or comments about recreation and economic development and public safety in the course of all of that. Next slide as well. Uh, with that first mission statement of designing a vision, that was very helpful for us, but there was a uh, a secondary objective that we came to, and that was to use the information that we were getting, because, and the fact is that we had a very good turnout and quite a few comments, uh, as you'll note here in just a moment. And so we wanted to try and make sure we could take those comments and take people's uh, observations and share them in a way that could be helpful for all the parties involved. So essentially, we broke them into uh, uh, three different areas of action. One was councils that were rather comments for the city council, and for the most part, these were tied to legislative actions and policies. Another type of comments we had were comments that were more administrative. Uh, and so, and these, these were tied to the city manager, so we directed those comments to him. An example there might be, I wish the parking garage was painted, it would make it feel more safe. And it was seen to be, for example, more of an administrative function than it was a policy question, shall we or shall we not paint the uh, parking garage, and if so, what color? Uh, so we left that on the administrative side of the table. Uh, the uh, and then also there were comments that were from the community that seemed to raise questions that education could help address, and so we incorporated ways to use those comments to help do the education piece. Next slide, please. Uh, there was a, uh, let's see, I think I've essentially recovered this, but just to get it on again, so with city manager issues, administrative, education issues, we use the newsletter, we use social media to help address those. There were some comments that were not actionable as well. These were often opinions, and so they didn't see, seem to call for a particular action. I do like this, I don't like that. Uh, and uh, wasn't necessarily tied to a, a public policy question, or it may be an idea that was possi- that was uh, a very far-ranging idea, such as, I don't like the building uh, that was just put up on the corner, whatever, please tear it down. And we just didn't see that as a real actionable item. Um, and then there were legislative issues, as I saw, or as I said, and uh, and so we'll be touching on some of those as well. Next slide, please. Uh, the top education results, uh, we had a number of comments about the garage, forty in total, uh, garage parking, a lot of uh, interest in retail, a lot of interest in public safety at thirty-four. There were none, uh, comments about development and nuisance questions, and quite a bit of comment in housing in, overall. Uh, these were the top education results, so these were items that we started to develop with the help of the Communications Division, our department with Linda's team, uh, responses to, and then put that out in e- e-newsletter and uh, other activities or other venues we have, if it's a TV production, or if it's uh, uh, some other social media approach. And so you can see the list ranging from housing miscellaneous parks and recreation, governance and employment and so on, and even transit. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Here were our top, top, top of comments in education. So topic one was about street parking and garage. And here's a couple of samples of what they look like. The village of Chambers Bay is jam-packed and difficult to park. There is not enough parking. Traffic flow is restricted. Parking below is inconvenient and creepy. I'm going to pause here because I think it's also good to remember, we started this process in July twenty nineteen. And between July twenty nineteen and February, a number of things happened and sometimes in direct relationship to these comments. So the garage did get painted on the interior and there was more lighting added and comments coming in helped to spur, spur that along. Other comments about retail is a higher quality business, better restaurants, could use more interesting retail and could make it more unique. And these are some of the educational pieces we've worked with as well. And the third most popular comment segment was on public safety. And such as UP has way more serious crime than I was expecting. It needs a bigger police force with investigators. This was before the investigator came on the team, as you can tell. And I appreciate how hard the police department works with its limited resources. And why are, why, why are there so few police covering University Place? Many of these things helped us develop educational pieces so that people could get some statistical information about how things stack up in these areas. Next slide, please. So here's the outcomes. And we had educational campaigns that have been started, as I said, there were articles that were produced. Plans were made for a webpage implementation, but that has been stalled with COVID. More of a drawing resources away from that activity. And some of the, that development is currently in hold as a result. Here are some examples of some of the pieces we did or that were done rather through the communications side of the house. As talking about parking and curb side parking in order to facilitate ease of access to business and some of the to go functions that are, people are using frequently now. Next slide, please. So here's the city manager list, just in terms of the big, big chunks of it here. And they involved improvements to Market Square, Market Square activities, some great pictures of salsa dancing. For example, as one of the things that we had going on there. Implementing street projects, increased bike presence and adding more, more tenants citywide, increasing economic development is a point of interest as well. Those were seen, seem to be focused through the, or applied most directly to the city manager. And those were the top of the, that particular hit parade. And a few photos to help us remember what was going on at the time. Next slide, please. So on the legislative results, these are some of the comments we had, which were comments about comments about parks and recreation. And we had ninety-one comments that ended up being on the legislative piece of that. Sixty-one comments about housing, a very popular subject. Frankly, I was a bit surprised, but that's why we do these things, because you learn some things as well. And then public safety. Now, there's an asterisk there and the asterisk is to remind me to tell you that public safety, actually, we had listed in, not in the legislative piece, but because it wasn't a policy question. It wasn't a question of whether we have a police department or not. It was more of a question about how much resource. It was a budget question. How much resource do we give or provide to the public safety side? But really, at the heart of it, it comes down to a council decision. And so we've moved over to the legislative side. Yeah, it would actually fall on a budget category otherwise. But fifty-three is still a high count and an important issue in our community, I think, as we recognize, probably as our discussions started, highlighted a bit earlier tonight. And there were comments about governance as well. And let's see, street parking, development, walkability, a lot of kudos there and a lot of requests for more of it. And, and developing a retail and transit and a few other activities such as events. Next slide, please. So here are the comments we saw in, in regards to public safety, the top three. We have a wonderful city in all respects and had, and as we grow in population, we need to acquire additional police and emergency responders and keep our tax base strong to support those and other essential services. We're planning living here for a long time to come. While I feel free, my activities haven't freed, what, excuse me, while I feel safe, my activities haven't changed. I do feel we need to change, need to increase our police force. Increase the size of the police force. The bike riding officers who had twenty years ago were awesome. And adequate police patrols for current, for current increases in car prowls and house break-ins. So that, that was some of the comments we had and meant, mean, meant to be fairly representative of the top comments. And while we had fifty-three in the public safety question, I think we had a hundred and seventy overall. According to my footnote there. Next slide, please. Top two priority in housing, here's, here's what we were hearing. Phase out single-family zoning, build up dense, require low sectioned housing units. And then to counterpoint to that, we'd also hear, stop building more apartments and condos except for affordable senior housing. And I don't think more condos and apartments are a good solution. More two to three stories, smaller homes on lots that have been split will keep the housing presence, but offer more affordable homes. And rent should be kept for the reasonable, kept reasonable for the community. Continually rising rents and home prices may cause homelessness. Don't overbuild. Keep the community small, age diverse and safe. Change is inevitable, but given if it a lot of, but give it a lot of thought and consideration first. Thank you for allowing me input. So again, representative of the housing comments we got. Keep, next slide, please. On parks, having some open green space with a few picnic tables would be great. Maybe a small splash area for young kids to run through would be great for parents if a small park area outside homestead was possible. Bring back parks in Iraq. We need their programs in our community. I would like to see youth recreation programs re-instituted and to make better use of our parks. It is a barrier for families who lack transportation to participate in Lakewood or Tacoma. Without youth programs, they might turn to less productive activities or crime. We need to show that UP cares about all citizens. So there's ninety-one comments that follow that, these general themes. And that was our top issue or comment area in our legislative piece. Next slide, please. So here are the outcomes, which involve the development of a strategic calendar for articles for the venues that I mentioned earlier. Stories of, stories for the city council news, excuse me, for the city newsletter, based on those comments. Help clarify the city roles and development, talk about business recruitment, what it was like to be a city-owned facility or how we do that and what we don't do. For the city manager, most recent improvements in the village and the garage further development within town center and various street improvements also came about through that. And then legislatively, we have a list, we have a listing post with a lot of input that can help us in our council goals as we move forward with creating those. Now, it's hoped that the first quarter of twenty twenty-one will have a goal-setting opportunity. And so we're building up to that, but the information here is really a great tool to have and in place for that as well. Next slide, please. Now, then we had the COVID effect, as we started to call it. It really, it really impacted the project because we didn't really continue with our outreach. We were all wondering what to do, just really what, how to get by in a day and what we can and can't do initially when this came about in mid-March. And there was a lot of wondering there and I'm afraid the, the, the matching campaign took a very much a step behind the effects and our attention on COVID as a community and as, as individuals as well. And it changed the way we're getting input. It also started us thinking differently about some of that input. We have here the initial timeline that we had set up and we were on that timeline, working pretty well within it. And that would have had us come to you, City Council in July for the formal adoption of a vision statement and preparation for a public release in August at our twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth anniversary party or birthday party, if you prefer. Obviously, that didn't take place. Next slide, please. So we really started to think that people's priorities may also have shifted because we do things very differently than we did nine months ago, when these things were being done. We work differently, at least for now. We work at home, not everyone, but many of us. Essential workers continue and some offices have opened, but it's not the same. We certainly have parents of children that are school age. We educate our children differently now. And that's, that's very much a challenge at the moment. And so hopefully, as COVID gets under control, we'll be able to move back to a more traditional educational approach. But for the moment, that consumes a lot of a person's time, attention and thoughts if you're a parent with a child of school age. And we actually all interact differently. After all, today I have spent something like eight or nine hours in front of my computer, talking to people through wires. And I would have done it differently if it wasn't for the COVID effect. And I suspect your life has changed just as much as mine. And we have new challenges, at least for now. So all of that has us wondering about where to go from here with regards to the survey and our vision statement. Next slide. So as I said, we, we want to use this information. It's valuable. People put a lot of effort into it and they're very insightful comments. The council goal-setting opportunity coming up first quarter twenty twenty-one is a great place for us to bring the focus back to on this. And in the meantime, for us all to get familiar with the materials. And the real question gets to be, has life changed so much that from twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty to October of, or excuse me, October of twenty nineteen to October of twenty twenty. That's a year ago. Has life changed so much that those comments aren't relevant anymore? Are the priorities shifted over the long run in our community? Are the opportunities different as well? And no, I, I don't have a direct answer for those. I have some of my own thoughts, those questions, but I have some of my own thoughts. But this is where really our committee is at the moment. How do, how do we want to move forward with this information? And how much weight do we give that? And that's really more of a discussion point for council. And let's see, is there one last slide or is this it? Okay, here we are. So so after that, if that division opportunity is still quite the same. And we'd like to get council direction on how this project moves forward in the future, how to use this information, if it's still valid. If we do further public outreach, because we can, we still have Flashvote, we still have five hundred plus people signed up for it and, and maybe a way to get more. So it's a question of how we move forward with our vision documents. And that's, that's where we are. That interruption has been significant. And our committee unfortunately hasn't been able to get back together because of that interruption to come up with a firm recommendation for you. So as, as I discussed it with our committee members. We wanted to take a few minutes tonight and with each of the committee members and have them talk just a little bit about some of their observations or conclusions from this and from this experience. And frankly, we haven't had that opportunity together before. So Mayor, Lacy and Council, that's our report. I'd invite Councilmember Pluski or Councilmember Keel to share your thoughts and all follow-up towards the end, their comments.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I want to applaud Mayor Protem. And also the I hear a lot of background noise. You can mute their mic. I would like to applaud Mayor Protem Worthington, as well as our city staff for doing an amazing and outstanding job. Mayor Protem Worthington really rolled up his sleeve, sleeves, dug into this and was very thoughtful. And he summarized all of our committee thoughts very well and, you know, very concisely, because there is a heck of a lot of questions that we, we went through hundreds of them to summarize it all for the council at large. But the point that we, I would like to make is that there was no really engagement of, of our public the way we had intended. And I think that's a major shortcoming of, of these outcomes. I don't think we should throw it away. I, I believe that this is a fundamental barometer of where we were and that to continue this discussion into twenty twenty-one so that we can really engage with a community chat and then hopefully a face-to-face one that will for, provide a lot more feedback, because as we know, face-to-face communication is the richer form of communication. And that is essential as we talk about the next twenty-five years of our quality of life in our city. And I do believe that some of those values have been changed. And so I would like to hear back from the public as to how, how that has changed and what they would like to see our city become in, in the future. So thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Keel.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I think the committee, the subcommittee as a whole, I did think did fantastic with staff and Mayor Protem and Councilmember McCloskey, it was, it was very, you know, the times we got together, I, I think we had very rich conversation. It was, it was pretty, it was hard work. I mean, it was pretty arduous, you know, question after question and after question and oh, well, what category? Well, this category, well, no, I think about that. Well, what do you think? I mean, it was, it was a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of discussion. So I, and I want to be particular about that. So you understand, I, I think these two longer staff. We really dug into the data and really tried to be circumspect about how, how we want to categorize everything. And so I, I feel really good about that work. I, I'm also of the opinion too that, that with, with COVID, some things may have changed. Although when we looked at the data, I mean, I wasn't really overly surprised with what we saw. You know, I mean, we kind of, we kind of figured it was police and recreation, you know? That's pretty much, you know, the top two things, you know, and, 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 and the data bore that out. So, you know, now though with COVID, I think there's an opportunity to, to using that as a kind of a base of where we think people are, what tweaks may have come up given COVID, right? I, I still think people want to be safe. I still think people are trying to figure out how we get that together and how close can we get that to normal? And, and maybe what does the new normal look like, you know, for us, I think is, is the question that we need to, to try to get after. How we go about doing that, I, I hope that we, we roast that question in our, in our sessions at the beginning of the year. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Fleming, do you have any insight on the report that Mayor Protem Worthington just gave us on Flashvote?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, first, I, I want to just echo the comments that other council members have made, you know, to Mayor Protem Worthington and to Councilmember Keel and McCloskey. What a great report. What a truly great report. Not only just informative, but it really does help capture the picture of what people are yearning for in the community, you know, and Mayor Protem Worthington, I would say, don't feel disheartened, you know, when you look at point five percent of the population responded, but yet these are folks in our community who really have a passion for who we are, you know, and this may sound a little cliche, but, you know, our community was really founded, you know, by citizens and for citizens. And, you know, where your Flashvote questions and results are, are going, really. And, you know, where your flash vote questions and results are going really underscores. You know, what people from the beginning till now have, have said they want for their community. They want to live in a safe community. They want to have a community that in which there's activities, not just for one segment of our population. But for all segments of our population, Parks and Rec. From the day one till present has just been, you know, foremost in most people's minds. I mean, 30% of the year respondents were for public safety, 51% were for Parks and Rec program. So I, I think that does represent, while it's a small cohort and sampling, it really does. Echo the sentiments, really, I think of the majority of the people in our community and. You know, certainly we live in a COVID world and that has changed the way we. The see things through the current lens that we have, but you know, the world after COVID. Will likewise be as equally different as the world with COVID. So. I, I think you have laid a great foundation for where the council needs to carry the conversation now in, in the 2021 era. And then forward from there. So thank you so much. It was a great, great presentation.
Councilmember, Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, you had your hands up. Do you not want to speak anymore? You're muted.
I just wanted to thank. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington and his committee on a great work they did. I know how hard it is to. Get the citizens of our city engaged in. Our city operations and it looks to me like you've done a wonderful job. I was just wondering. Of the 500 plus people that signed up for flash vote. How many, were the comments pretty much spread out, you think, across those 500? Or were there just several people provided inputs?
And so in response, if I may, Mayor, the, the comments were, we would have several hundred people responding to each question, each survey, I should say. And so yes, several responses to each question. I think it was pretty broad. I do know that from what Lisa had told us from the flash vote people, she was our liaison to the flash vote service. They were, Flash Vote itself was pretty amazed that we had as many written comments. So we had almost 1,100 written comments. I think it was 1,051. Written out multiple sentences of, of where people's interest is.
Thank you.
I'm Councilmember Figaro. I see your hands up. You need to unmute yourself, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to get back to the next steps. And by the way, I, I thought it was an excellent presentation as well and very informative. And I appreciate the committee's work. I wish we could have moved forward with the current information. But as you stated, Steve, the epidemic really has changed the, the status quo. And the status quo is, you know, where people were heading based on that current information. I think that we need, I would like to see us take this opportunity. During this COVID time to, to see what the citizens are feeling. More than anything else, do they see change needing to occur based on that? On, on the new, on a new norm? Do they feel there's a new norm coming that they will never go back to being the same? And some examples is, of course, is we talk about Parks and Rec. We know that, that recreation has significantly has changed within the youth. Is there something else out there now that they've had a chance to settle down and say, wow, this isn't working for us anymore? And we're having to change how we do recreation for our youth or how I want recreation for my, for my kids. So I, I think that in, in public safety could have changed only because. How people are more at home versus out and about. So I, I think we should consider, or you, your committee should consider, recommend maybe another. Another process of survey that in, in today's time. I think there has been a quite a bit of change and it'd be interesting to see. If the perspective of our citizens has changed. That being said, if we have that, then if it goes back to being close to norm or normal, then we already have that perspective. If it doesn't, we, we now can move on with, with, with the new perspective of our citizens. Under the new norm, which we wouldn't have if we don't do that. Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, you had your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor Belisi, if I may, I just, I had a wrap up statement I wanted to make at the end. So I'll, I'll hold for that if that's all right.
A Councilmember Fleming, you had your hands up again. We are running late, so if we can keep it short, that would be great because we have a heavy topic of our budget to go over yet this evening.
Mine will be very quick. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, when you made the comment, you wished that there have been more citizens that had participated. You sparked the neuron in my head and reminded me of when Ron Williams was mayor of our city. He actually wished there hadn't been more citizens when he did the survey and held the public hearing on roundabouts. Which, which followed by almost riotous activity in the city and recalls for the city council. So I don't know which one, which way is better or worse. So I think you, you got the better end of the deal on this.
I, I think I did, or you did, yes. Thanks for the thought there. Well.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. And I wanted to again thank my fellow committee members with Councilmember Kent Keel and Councilmember Delise McCloskey for the good work together. As we move, move this project along. It did, did take quite a bit of work, but it was a good team and I was glad to be part of that. Council, in your email tomorrow, you'll get a copy of several things related to the survey. One is a PDF of each of the eight surveys and what their outcome is. So you'll be able to see survey by survey, what the answers were, what the comments were. And you'll have that in tomorrow's email. You'll also receive an Excel spreadsheet that has each of the written comments. So the first one's a survey summary and it's more, it'll, it'll be interesting for you. And then the next one is written comments and how we've sorted them. And you may have different ideas of how to sort them. I don't know. But we've, we attempted to organize in a meaningful way from what we had to do. But you'll have all the raw, fresh data or all the, all the raw data, which would say unfiltered, complete with spelling errors if they were so. So that's all I wanted to add. And I again, appreciate the chance and the opportunity to work with. A very good staff team and an excellent set of council members to help get this done. Thank you, Mayor Belisi.
Yeah, this will not be the last time that we discuss this project. And I'm assuming that as you guys go through the, the reams of data and information. Feel free to email Mayor Pro Tem Worthington and staff on any ideas and suggestions you may have as we move this process forward. Whether it be in sending out some updated flash votes or, or whatever. To, to move this process forward, but we will definitely. This is not the last that we're going to hear of this. All right. So we're going to close this item. Our next item is the very interesting topic of the 2021-22 proposed biennial budget. We're going to have our city manager open this process. And then I am sure that our finance director, Leslie Blaisdell, will be also providing some input and information on this. This is one of many study sessions that we're going to have on this topic. So this is just study session one to provide the overview. So with that, Mr. Sugg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present to council the 21-22, 2021-2022 biennial budget. And I'll just make my comments brief and turn it over to Finance Director Leslie Blaisdell will take you through the details. Let me just start off by saying this is not a normal year, and I think that's been the theme of the evening with the COVID-19 pandemic. We've had a number of challenges. I think we've risen to those challenges. Even though, you know, they've been creating. Severe conditions for state and local governments around the country. We feel very fortunate for. The, the state of affairs in University Place. But that's due to the, you know, the wisdom and the policies that the council has instituted. And, and the management of our highly capable staff guiding as, as we work our way through this crisis. That is, there is no rulebook. We're, we're, we're working our way through this using our best possible judgment. And, and following the, the advice of the health officials and the scientists. So at the time of this writing, the full and complete picture of the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic is not fully clear. And we built our budget on certain assumptions in an uncertain time. We will continue to maintain our conservative approach and monitor revenues and expenditures closely. Now, let me just make a point here before I turn over to Leslie. To address fiscal impacts, early on in the pandemic, I met with staff and directed them to make expenditure cuts. For the 2021, 2020 calendar year to lower our expenditures by approximately a million dollars. They have done that. There was a number of areas that we chose not to do that wouldn't affect. Operations and services to the, to the citizens of University Place. And that we felt that we could defer and delay some things that would free up some revenues, not knowing where revenues would come in. And I think Leslie will, will point this out in her presentation. But we. Those revenues. At least through the, through the two quarters appear to remain fairly stable. Sales tax did not decline as much as we anticipated. Primarily due to the online sales and the home deliveries of products, services and, and other taxable goods. For instance, emissions tax is projected to be slightly above our conservative estimate. We all know the fuel taxes are down because there's less driving going on and less gas being used. And gambling taxes projected to be below our estimates. But even with that, we've been able to stay fairly close to the revenue estimates we made prior to the pandemic. So. Just maybe just a few more comments about the budget that you'll see. The 2020, the, the, this biennial budget for 2021-2022 is a status quo budget. So there's not a whole bunch of new things here. There are a few things that are one-time expenses. And I'll give you an example of the, we, we need to do a update to our surface water management plan, comprehensive plan. It's been a long time. So a full update to that plan will be necessary and monies to do that is included. And there's a, a few other items in the budget, but for the most part, it's status quo. It's, it's core level. It's a, it's a budget that continues to provide core level services in both operations. And our capital improvement budgets. So, and one note about capital improvements, our CIP as it's known. We use our local dollars, the, the local tax dollars that are collected to leverage grants. And that's how we feel that we best achieve the scales that we, you know, to achieve the kind of. You know, the improvements that the city comes to enjoy. So. Make that point. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie and have her go through some of the other items in the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director. And this budget was being worked on right up till the 11th hour. But the budget document was submitted to the city clerk on October 1st, which is in accordance with RCW 35A 34. The proposed budget is balanced and conservative budget that assumes a continuation of the 2020 levels of service to the community. As always, we will continue providing the best service we can, meeting all of our contractual, legal and debt obligations. While exercising prudent cash management and increasing our strategic reserve. Today is our first study session. We have on the schedule two additional study sessions. And then the consideration and included in those meetings are also two public hearings. And allowing public comment also during study session number three. So we have several opportunities to dig into this and get questions answered prior to adoption of the budget. The budget is balanced with operation budgets at core service levels. There are no new staff positions included in the biennium. The CIP as City Manager Steve Sugg mentioned. Is at a core level and we use our local dollars to leverage grants. Those local dollars are real estate excise taxes, surface water management fees and impact fees. As our city matched to those grant projects. The debt payments are budgeted according to the city's debt schedule and include the recent bond refunding changes that occurred in December. So that's all included. I wanted to give you a, a little breakdown of the budget document. It's organized into seven sections to help the reader, both the city council and our citizens. Find the information about the city and the biennial budget. The first section is the city manager's budget message. Then we have the budget guide, which is intended to familiarize the reader with the budget policies and procedures, basis of accounting. And the presentation of the budget document. And then the next sections are just different ways of presenting the same numbers, which is a very typical in finance. We have the operating budget, the executive summary, which provides an overview of the financial condition and comparative statistics. One page will give you all of the revenues that are included in the budget. The next page is all of these sources or are all of the uses or expenditures for the budget. And then there are some charts that break it down, whether it's categorized as taxes and, and the various expenditure funding departments. The next section is the operating budget, which breaks it down by department. So you will see the budgets for the finance department or the public works department and the various departments. We have the capital budget, which gives you some information on our three capital programs, which are the parks CIP, the public works CIP. And the municipal facility CIP. And then the budget by fund, which is my favorite section. It really gives the, the clearest picture of everything. You can go to each fund, general fund, street fund. And, and get the details of what the revenues are and what the expenditures are. And then finally, we have the appendix section, which just gives some miscellaneous statistical information. Our historical tax rates, debt service information, salary ranges and your glossary of some of the budget terms. So for, in, in this budget. For revenue projections, we continue to be conservative. That has always worked well for us, especially this year with COVID-19. We, we conservatively budgeted our sales tax and that has worked out quite nicely for us. It includes the statutorily allowed increase in the city's ad valorem property tax in each year of the biennial budget. And as you recall, that will need to be voted on also to, to approve that. And that is on the schedule for October 19th and November 2nd. The tax revenues are expected to increase from the 2020 year end estimates. As we project that we'll see some recovery from COVID-19 revenue losses. Sales tax is projected to increase from 2020 estimates, but remain below our 2019 actuals. Utility tax revenues are projected to decrease when compared to 2020. And real estate excise tax collections, while they seemed, while they are holding steady, we haven't anticipated a slight decrease in 2021. Once again, that's an area where we don't appropriate those monies until we receive them. So I would much rather have a bonus at the end of a year than to be scrambling to, to make up that difference. Gambling tax is our probably hardest hit revenue from COVID-19. And so our 2021, 22 estimates, estimates for the buzz budget are consistent with what we are projecting this year to end. Until we see how that area recovers as far as bars opening and, and people being able to get together again. Fuel tax has been the most difficult one to predict. We still don't have enough data to accurately project where this is going in the next two years. As things open back up and people get back to work, we would assume that more people are driving. But we're also hearing rumblings of a lot of companies really enjoying this work from home situation and possibly converting to that for the future. So the estimates that are included in our budget for fuel tax comes from a revenue estimator provided by MRSC. And I checked that again this week. It has not been updated. So that might be an area that we have to adjust next year when we do carry forwards as we get a clearer picture of where this year is going to end. The estimates for utility tax are at about $2 million, $2,033,000 in 2021. And we show a decrease in 2022. As you know, our utility tax for telephone landlines and cell phones continue to decrease. So we have built that into our estimates as well as our forecast. Staff has reviewed all the fees and no increases are included in the proposed budget. Franchise fees are projected to remain fairly steady. We have projected a decrease in business license fees, just because we don't know how businesses have been impacted by COVID-19, how many might not return after COVID-19. So we have projected a decrease so that we can maintain core services and make sure our funding covers everything. On the expenditure side, as the city manager mentioned, it is a status quo budget. We have not added new things, new items. There's a modest, modest level of inflation assumed for the expenditures. We did include benefit assumptions for our staff benefits. The medical benefits, we've projected at 10% increase in 2021 and a 6% increase in 2022. Final numbers should be coming from AWC anytime now. But we feel that those are more than ample enough that we, we won't have under budgeted those areas. A one and a half percent cost of living adjustment for all staff is included in 2021. And we have included a 3% COLA for 2022. As you know, typically the COLA is based on the June CPI. So that's just a number to get something in the budget. What actually is implemented in 2022 is based on hard numbers that come out in June of 2021. The city manager mentioned some new items. There are a few, the majority of which are one-time items. He mentioned the swim comprehensive plan. We have some banners and hardware for 27th Street. Some security upgrades at the public workshop and, and the police station. And we've also included for, in this budget as well as into 2025 of our forecast, money for secession planning. We have a, a high percentage of staff that are within five to seven years of retirement and we wanted to make sure we had funding available if training was needed or anything related to secession planning. So the budget is a balanced and conservative budget. Like I mentioned earlier, it assumes the continuation of the 2020 levels of service and will continue providing the best service we can, meeting all of our contractual, legal and debt obligations. The forecast I provided in the memo shows that with the exception of the street fund, all areas maintain a positive balance through our forecast period. And as you know, that street fund has been impacted by the transportation benefit district, which is still in the courts to determine whether we get to keep that money or have to return it. But for the purposes of the forecast, I have assumed that that money is going away so that we can get a clear picture of how we need to move forward. So at this point, we wanted to open it up for questions and those questions will help us drive our next study sessions as far as areas we need to focus on. And as always, as you go through this document, it's rather large. Feel free to call me at any time if you have any questions or send me an email with questions. I'm, I'm happy to help out in any way I can. So thank you.
Okay. To help expedite this, I will use the round robin seating chart. So if you have questions, get them out. If you don't tell me so, so we can move this, move this item forward. Councilmember Figueroa, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keel, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Keel, just one question, Leslie. And you, you told us this quite a bit, but I wanted to hear this one more time to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. I do know that you said that this budget reflects us not having the TBD dollars. And given that I see street fund where it goes red in 2025. Can you just, not at a very detailed level, but just at a high level, kind of talk to us again, how, how, how we're planning for that? I mean, you know, and how we're trying to cover until we go red?
Yeah, as the forecast projects that by the end of 2025, that fund would go negative at our current service levels. So of course, the, the main way would be looking at a, a reduction of service levels. Another solution is finding other revenue sources. I know you're discussing utility tax later in this meeting. A portion of that could go towards the street fund to help keep that from going negative. So I mean, there are all kinds of options as council looks at it. The, the nice thing is we have a few years. We've got some time. We can approve this budget, which is balanced and that fund is covered. And then go into a deeper dive of how we can solve that problem before 2025. And hopefully do it without having to cut our service levels.
Great. And one other question, Mayor, if I may, talk to us about the public safety. I know we keep talking about that, you know, being, you know, difficult, but I, I see it here in the black all the way through 2030. Barely in the black, you know, toward the end and just kind of give, you know, us kind of the overview of, and I know we're still upside down there, right? You don't have, we have numbers there, but these numbers aren't adequate, I guess, with your word I use. But can you talk to us how we kept it black through to 2030?
Yeah. When council put in the additional positions, we, council authorized a transfer from the general fund. So the transfer from the general fund went into that fund to pay for those positions for the 10-year forecast. So some of that money is sitting in there. But as you look at the, the year-end balance, the ending fund balance each year, you can see that it, it decreases each year. And so that money is sitting there and it, it looks like we have a lot of money at the end of 2021. We have $5.1 million. Why aren't we hiring a bunch of new officers? Which is why we do the 10-year forecast because you can see by 2030, that number decreases to $950,000. And as we take that forecast out further, eventually the fund does go negative. If we don't make any changes at all, if we keep the current service level and our current revenues, that fund does actually, one year off this forecast goes negative in 2031.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Protem Lee, any comments, comments or questions?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have a several questions, which all, they're administrative in nature. I'll direct them to the city manager by email. So I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCleskey, any comments or questions at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Blaisdell, thank you for the great report and summary and outline of the, of the document. I was intrigued by the utility taxes because that's the topic of our next discussion as your comment is that in 2021, we'll see a decrease. I know the cell phones and some of those items are decreasing. But we al, we also know that some of the other utilities are increasing. So this fund in aggregate, is it going to decrease in 2021 to or with the, with an aggregate, aggregate amount start increasing after 2021?
So our year-end estimate for utility tax for 2020 is $2,066,000. Our revenue estimate for 2021 is $2,033,000 and then drops to $2,021,000 in 2022. For, we are seeing an increase in solid waste and garbage. We've, on most of these, we tend to project our next year's revenues based on a two or a three-year average. And that way, if it does come in higher, again, that's a bonus. But we don't want to over project because when we're balancing this budget and making sure that we have the funding to pay for our core services. I, I don't like to pad those numbers too much. I would rather have a bonus at the end of the year that we can spend on one-time items or, or put into our strategic reserve or our cash and reserve ending fund balances. So for instance, the gas utility can be heavily impacted by the weather. If we have a really cold winter, we'll get more. We'll, we'll get more monies on that. If we, if we don't, we can sometimes get less. So those projections are based on an average over the past several years. I, I do project that some of these will come in, could come in a little bit higher, but we like to be fairly conservative. So that we maintain our, our cash reserves and make sure everything can be funded.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't. I had some questions earlier. I addressed those to the city manager already. And I will probably take another look at this budget before I have more questions. So I'll hold those at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Worthington, any comments or questions at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have some. So let's see, I'm just trying to think of where to start. The swim fund, surface water management fund. We have a good deal of capital flowing out as matching dollars in our capital projects coming up. Is that going to, it's taken us a while, I assume, to build reserves to, to deal with that? Or are we going to significantly impact those reserves to such a, such a level that we may not have similar capital matching opportunities in the near term?
We are the, we've had quite a few grants in the last few years and we have several budgeted in this upcoming budget cycle. So the swim fund reserves that we've been building up for a while are projected to be maxed out in the next couple of years. In fact, in the 2021 budget, there is a surface water management project that we currently don't have full funding for. Public Works Director Cooper is looking for some grant opportunities to make up the difference on that. And that's an area, which is why one of the items in our schedule, in our new items, is the surface water comprehensive plan study to be done next year to see are the, are the fees ample enough? Where, where, where is that fund heading and, and what can we do?
Okay. And see how that, how that plan develops. And we'll probably use some external help to make that plan come about as my guess and we budgeted something for that purpose.
Yes.
Okay. Somewhat similarly, in the parks capital fund, the park CIP, we seem to have budgeted quite a bit there. And while I recall that we have some grant requests in for outdoor recreation grants now, that I didn't recall quite that level of budgeting, or maybe I'm missing that or missing that. I'm getting that wrong. So parks CIP.
Yes, parks CIP, we do budget. We, we have budgeted the two projects that we submitted grant requests for in hopes that we'll get them so that the funding is there. But on the expenditure side, we do budget the remaining dollars that aren't specifically listed for a program as a contingency unappropriated amount. That way during the year, if projects come up that council approves, that money can be shifted from unallocated to the project just with council's authorization. And we don't then have to go back for an official budget adjustment to move those monies and appropriate those funds. It's just done that way to give council the flexibility to add projects or take advantage of, of grant funding that could come available.
So the net on that, as we look at what we anticipate for grant revenue and the matching fund coming out of this, excuse me. Actually, that's just budgeted dollar. That's not a matching situation. It would be our, our impact fees would be matching. So the, this is the gross project cost that we're talking about here. If we look at the full amount that is budgeted minus the amount that we have obligated or hope to obligate, what's the net that is unobligated?
The net that's unobligated in 2021 is $1.5 million.
Okay. So certainly we have some.
2022, it's $650,000. And that's provided all of the impact fees come in as projected. Again, we, we conservatively project those and don't allocate them for use until we're sure we have them.
We've had similar conversations, thinking of the last budget session a couple of years ago, about two from right about now. Anyhow. So we have one and a half million unobligated, but available if we find the right opportunity, I guess, is what we look at.
Correct.
Okay. Then you have the, Your Honor, let's see. Do we need a motion to extend?
Not until 9:15.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. In the IT arena, we have quite a bit has been happening this year in IT and I'm sure it was, it's necessary as well. It's, I think, 1.1 or so million. And I can't frankly find my notes. So I'm just going off memory here, but the, the notes are tied up in many pages of this thing. Yeah. Yeah. Are we going to need to have contributions from the departments that are benefiting from those improvements to, for future replacement cost? So are we, are we spreading those costs against the departments that are benefiting from the capital expense?
Yes, we do. We do an internal service that spreads some of the capital expenses to the departments. When we do make the large purchases, we, we do depreciation and that, that helps offset. So that one is a, a bit higher. We have, and the year-end estimate is, is higher because of the COVID-19 technology expenses. But that money is coming in from the general fund and the, the grant dollars that we receive for the CARES Act.
So will, will, will we fully expense that and not end up looking at future replacement? So not, that's really the heart of what I was asking. I, where I was headed with this is if we end up charging the departments for that capital, for the, for that capital expense and its replacement cost, I should say.
The stuff related to COVID-19 will, the money will come in from those grant funds, but then it will sit in the fund as we do go through the, the depreciation process. And so the departments won't be charged for those COVID-19 expenditures. They're charged for the, the other ones that are as part of the normal budget.
Or the future replacement cost is.
In 2021, the capital budget in IT is, is $100,000 is what's budgeted in 2021. Or not good related.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for now. If you just want to make a margin note for you later, take a look at pages 38 and 39. And, and then I wanted to look at, oh, division expenses, where, where would I find those in the document?
Those are on page 39.
Sorry.
Is the, 38 is the revenues and 39 are the expenses. We have it broke down by the major groups, city council, city manager, community events, economic development, and those are the totals.
Yeah, I'm sorry, subsets of those. So if we were to look at public works, for example, where would I find the?
You would find that in the department's, departmental budgets, which starts on page 61. And that goes through and breaks it down by whether it's services or fees or, you know, professional services, supplies, capital, and that sort of thing.
Great. Excuse me while I get to that page, right? So, let's see if I think that's illustrating my question. Let's see. Services and charges, that's on the revenue side.
This is the show, this is the operating budget section. So when you go, so for instance, page 61 is the city council breakdown. You can see how much of the expenditure budget is salaries and wages, how much is benefits, supplies, and services and charges.
So in 2021, in the manager's budget, in six, page 62, community events line, obviously, we didn't spend as much as we had budgeted in 2020 for the reasons of COVID. And then we take a step up in 2021. Is that related to our deferred anniversary event, or is it something else?
Yes, it's related to the deferred anniversary event.
Okay, all right. And I've, this is, no. And let's take a look at page 66.
Okay.
Wages and salary and wages, comparing your 2021, your 2022. That seemed to be a large percentage increase. I saw it someplace else too, in a couple of departments, I think, public works and perhaps finance.
That happens because we, we project the benefit costs, well, the salaries, the 243, 234. We have a 3% COLA built into the projections because we don't know where that's going to end. And then it just depends of staff, departments as to whether, how many staff are, are topped out of their range or still within and getting merit increases.
Yeah, so at 3%, I got that. I saw that in the notes. And this is a little over 5%. So is that some sort of projected increase in benefits then, or?
Benefits is on the next line down, so you can see the benefits increased by about $5,000. And again, that probably won't be that drastic of a change, but not knowing what the benefit costs are, we, we project a higher percentage increase in the second year until we get actual numbers.
So the difference between the two, yeah, it's 4.1% difference between 2021 and 2022, just on the salary line. So, okay, ballpark, but all right, there maybe there's a step or something in there too. Okay. And so let's talk just briefly on the revenue piece. New construction, we're going to have that on our, we're going to have our public safety fund, property tax revenues. There's a hearing coming up here soon. Do you recall what our new construction increase in, in, is going to be, not, not in the gross amount, the net to the city and its taxes?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I could certainly look that up. Typically, it runs around the $25,000 to $30,000 range. And those numbers, we'll, we'll get accurate numbers when they give us the final in December.
Okay, we don't really have the finals yet.
We don't have the finals yet.
Yeah, so of course you would know for sure. All right. And the 1%, you know what we're getting there. And so I guess all, next time we get together on this, it would be good to get a sense of how much growth we're going to have in property tax. And compare that to how much growth we have in public safety expense. I think I find that helpful. That's where I was headed with that. Gosh, I think for the moment, there's a few more things, but I, those can wait until another time. And we can move on. I'm sure there's, there's some more things to talk about yet. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Wesley, for a good, good job as always on the report and your responses. Appreciate that.
Well, given, given the lateness of this, of this, if I come across any questions or comments, I'll definitely keep staff informed on it for our next meeting. We have one final item that is somewhat related to our budget, and that's our utility tax. We have our Eric Faison that's going to be providing us with an overview of that. It is scheduled, it was originally scheduled for a half hour session. We are running close to our evening's end time of 9:15. So I will be asking for an extension at 9:15 for this meeting. So Mr. Faison, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will keep my comments brief and allow you to basically ask questions. Over the past month or so, we've been talking internally about the options of increasing, for increasing the city's revenues. And we've identified one particular revenue source, which is the extension of the utility tax to other utility providers, those namely being Tacoma Public Utilities and Pierce County. Right now, all of our utilities basically are charged a utility tax primarily of 6%. And that includes telephone, cable, natural gas, solid waste, stormwater. And cable's the only exception, which has a 5% rate, but all the rest of them are at 6%. Right now, we do not charge a utility tax on our two public service providers, being TPU and Pierce County sewers. And so staff is proposing that the tax be extended to those two utility, well, that, that, those types of utilities, of which right now there's only two providers. We believe that this would be pretty essential to the city's long-term financial future. We have done some preliminary estimates of what the revenues would be, that would generate, would be generated by the tax. It's a little over $2 million a year with approximately $350,000 for sewer, $500,000 for water, and 1.2 million for electric. We estimate, while this tax is on the utility, it's expected that the utilities would extend the, their rates to cover that amount. And we roughly estimate that that would be about $11 a month for the average single family home. So, long story short, we think it's important for the city's long-term financial future. Just in, it's, you've, as you've gone through the forecast, you've seen how each year, most of our ending fund balances are declining every year. Our finance director, Lacy Blaisdell, pointed out that at the end of 2030, you're definitely going to see the public safety fund start to go negative, the general fund soon thereafter. So this is an option that we'd like the council to consider in terms of basically stabilizing the city's finances.
Okay, and that is your report, Mr. Faison?
It is.
Okay, with that, I know, I know we've all looked at the information that was presented in our packets. So I will go through the roll call to see if you have any additional comments or questions that Mr. Faison can answer at this time. I do know that Councilmember Figueroa unfortunately ran out of battery life on his phone, so he is no longer with us. So I will go to Councilmember Keel. Do you have any comments or questions concerning this issue?
Yeah, my first comment is, you know, the little plugin they give you is to put in the wall. Yeah.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah. You know, Eric, I know we've been talking about this for a while and I think I get, I think I know the answer to the question I'm going to ask. But just, just to put it out there, the, these are the only, and you said in your report, these are the only two utilities that do not pay the use fee to the, to the city right now. I mean, every other utility, with the exception of cable, and that's going to be the next in my crosshairs, I think.
That is correct. Cable is paying, but they're at a, it's federally regulated and they're at 5%. All the other utilities are at 6%.
With the exception of these two.
Correct, which are at zero.
And they also happen to be, you know, public utilities as well.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a little odd to me. And the other thing I think that was key for me is that this is a fee that the city is imposing on them directly for their use of our, I mean, they're tearing up our streets, they're putting in, they're digging holes, they're causing inconvenience and things like that within the city and all that kind of stuff like that. I mean, that's really what this fee is for.
Well, actually, so the franchise fees are generally for the tearing up of the streets. Utility tax is general city revenue. It's one of the three, one of the legs of our three-legged stool. We have property tax, sales tax, utility taxes. So it's just a general city revenue that, you know, all utilities pay, with the exception of these two, just like all, all property owners pay property tax. It's, it's that sort of concept.
But basically, it's our charge to them.
Correct. Right.
No, thank you, Mayor. Those are the questions I think we could answer.
Councilmember Protem Lee, do you have any comments or questions?
Councilmember Protem Lee, probably a couple of comments. The, the explanation that actually we are imposing this on the utilities is really of little consequence to the ratepayer. They see, they're going to see an increase in their, in their rate, whatever utility that, that they look at. And so the fact that we are levying this against the utility, it will be passed on to the, to the, to the consumer. And, and so at, at the same time, the TPU apparently is going to increase their rates based on their increased cost. So this all kind of snowballs. And then apparently, if we impose this tax on utilities, you plan on doing it in the mid 2021. This is just going to be about the time that, did you want to extend the meeting?
Can I get a motion? It is 9:13. Can I get a motion to extend, extend for another 20 minutes to 9:35?
Mayor Belicee, Mayor Protem Worthington, I move that we extend the meeting until 9:35.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, I second.
Any objections? Seeing none, we are extended till 9:35. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Protem Lee.
So this is going to all impact possibly in the mid 2021. This is probably going to be about the same time that we come out of the COVID. We open up our economy. So right at a time when people are trying to recover what they've lost through the COVID pandemic, they're going to be hit with an increase in utilities, which may not be, if you break it down by household, may not be that great, but to some people, it might. So the, I guess, you know, I understand our, our need for money. I understand where we're going. I guess it's just, it's hard for me to lay this on a ratepayer or consumer all at one time. So that's the only comment I have. I understand it. I just don't think that it's going to be hard to sell. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McCloskey.
Thank you, Mayor. When it comes to leveraging taxes on utilities, I think our U.P. voters always voted no. We had the utility fees attached to our parks and rec and they voted no. And to our food services as well. So I, I think this is a very sensitive topic for, for our citizens. So there, there is an educational component as to the direction that we're going because I, I do understand the numbers and I do understand when I see the numbers going into the red color, what, what that all means.
So with that and to Councilmember Protem's comments about just in the recovery from COVID, and we talked about $11 a month, but that could mean somebody not being able to, to afford milk for their families. You know, that's, you know, two, two to four gallons of milk that they, they could provide for their families. So I think we need to be sensitive to that as we compound all the taxes and, and all the fees that the utilities are incorporating and the cost of living COLA increases. Their upcoming property tax increase, even though they seem small and incremental, when you take them one by one, when you compile them all together, as I would say in the aggregate, it, the tax increases could amount to a lot. So I would consider proposing postponement to this utility tax for the, at least the 2020 budget and maybe bringing it back into the 2021 budget in more geared, phased approach. So that the, it's, it's not, it doesn't take such a dramatic hit. And then in the 2021, after, hopefully after COVID, we're in the COVID recovery, we could see how our, our economy is tracking then and as, as well as the health and wellbeing of our, our citizens as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, do you have comments or questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do. You know, first I want to begin with your comment when you mentioned, I, I'm, this is speaking as a doctor. When you said Councilmember Figueroa's battery life has run out and he's no longer with us. You have to know what went through my head.
Well, at least you're alert and paying attention. I appreciate that. You muted yourself, sir.
I was going to say we would have to have a moment of silence there. You know, to Eric and Matt, if he's still on the line, you're the legal folks, but I'm cleaning out the cobwebs in my head. But my question is, as a city, do we have the authority to even have levy this tax? Because I recall back a few years, there was some challenges when cities attempted to levy this tax once before against the utilities. So I'm, I don't remember the outcomes of that litigation, but I'd be very interested to know what your opinions are on that.
Yeah, maybe fill that one. You know, as I, as I frequently state, you know, there's two questions. There's can you do it and there's should you do it? Your question goes straight to the heart of can you do it? Um, it has pointed out in the accompanying memorandum, there was a case which the Washington State Supreme Court decided.
decided earlier this year that clarified that role for local governments to tax another local government when they're acting in a proprietary capacity, as opposed to their governmental capacity, and concluded that you can't, particularly in the context of utility tax. The city historically hasn't exercised that right, you know, that kind of falls into the should you category, which brings us kind of to the heart of the discussion tonight. But as far as I'm concerned, you do have that authority. The question then becomes kind of where the discussion has been. You know, do you want to do it generally? Kind of picking up on some of the comments earlier, would you like to do it now? Would you like to do it later? Would you like to phase it? What utilities would you like to do it on? Those sort of discussions. And I think that's where the utility, no pun intended, of some of the conversation for us, where I think there is value to be had.
Okay, so Matt, we're along with, and thank you for that. Along those lines, can we, when we, if we were to do this, could we levy that tax but prohibit the pass-through?
The tax itself, and Eric alluded to this, and, and so I'm going to watch, watch the words very carefully here. The tax itself is on the privilege of doing business in the city. So it is a tax on the business. So there should not be a line item, you know, if we tax an entity at 6% or whatever, you should not see a line on there saying City of UP tax straight on the bill. They can disclose that sort of off to the side. But on the itemization of taxes that the consumer has to pay, you shouldn't see that. What you should see, however, is a corresponding increase to the unit of service, whatever that might be, to essentially offset it.
Okay. And then my, my last comment is along the lines of Councilmember Lee and McCloskey. And that is, we just passed an alarm fee tonight. We're going to be taking up garbage fees soon. We've got property taxes were increasing. I, I get, I truly get where Eric is trying to go, and that is protect the city downrange. But I think the timing is way off on, on it at the present time. It would be a hard sell after going through all the taxes and fees, and only God knows how many other taxes or fees we're looking at down the road. I don't know, if any. But it just, when you, you have kind of this rolling tax fee, tax fee on the public, it becomes a really tough pill for people to swallow after a while. And so, you know, it, it is certainly not too late if we defer this conversation to later. It's not, and by all means, we're not trying to kick the can down the road, but certainly time it a little bit better than what it is. Because obviously, we've got to base the music sooner or later as to what we're going to do in the short term, long term, of keeping that budget balanced and delivering services to the community. So I, I would just caution the council to, you know, think carefully on, on timing of this conversation if we're going to continue it further down, down the road. So that's all I've got to say.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belicey. Mayor Protem Worthington. Eric, a couple of questions for you, if I could, please. One is, you asked me, and it was about an $11 impact on the, per household, I think, on a monthly basis. So is that, is that 6% of their average bill? Is it the gross revenue divided by the number of households? How did you get there?
The websites of each of the jurisdictions says basically what the average bill is for that service for a single-family household. And so we just applied the 6% to that amount.
Okay, great. Well, that's good. And there's another, let's see, oh, I know sometimes sewer estimate the number of users is sometimes we haven't been always easy to, for us to determine. How did we get to an estimate of, of what revenue would be from the sewage utility?
We based it off of our franchise fee. We know what that rate is, and we just applied the same rate to that amount of revenue to get through.
So we feel reasonably confident in that. So, okay, good. Thank you. All right. So as much as we think that our 10,500 or so households make up the larger, the, the vast majority of being electrical and wastewater customers, they don't. We have many other folks that pay electrical bills. We have Safeway. We have every commercial business here. And we have a few industrial businesses as well that also get to pay electrical. Industrial businesses use a lot of electricity, generally speaking. We also have public entities like, like school districts. Imagine what their electric bill is. Imagine, imagine what their wastewater bill is. And we would get 6% of whatever that number is if we were to pass this. And then what about the wastewater processing facility that's in UP and pays the rate that we, the tax that we would set? That facility is full of pumps and full of other electrical-consuming devices that makes it all run. It's a significant electrical pit. I have looked out, so I don't have to acknowledge it. So when I think about the fact that our residents would pay $11, but their government, the research cost, if they bring in to their service, in terms of dollars to pay for the services they mostly use, it's a, it's a pretty decent value. Now, I haven't, because others are, others are paying for it. We don't get too many police calls at the wastewater treatment. You know, that's not where, where our officers go in a certain respect to make service calls. So anyhow, there's some, some, some value in, in that, I think. I haven't really made up my mind on, on this. I, I think the idea of being able to right our ship over the long haul has, really does address a lot of our fiduciary responsibilities, at least as I see them. And that is of strength to us. I also have to think too, that if we are, if we are, do want to have that direction in terms of steering the ship, we're better steering it early than later. So it's a smoother, easier, slower, softer turn than at the last possible moment. Okay, I don't think I can take my nautical analogies any further. But I was just doing it for Mr. Lee's sake anyway. But yeah, I think you get the, my point is, we may want to think about this. We certainly do want to think about it, and that may cause us to wait a little while. But it does have some merit for us. And it does cost our citizens money, and we need to think hard about that. But for every dollar they put in, they may in fact get more like a $1.20 or a $1.30 of service increase. And that's not too bad of a deal. So I'm just speculating on that, but I think you saw how I got there. So I'm, you know, I haven't made my mind up by any means, but I want some opportunity to think about that for now. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Worthington. Given the lateness of the hour, I'll keep my comments brief. I am of the opinion that, you know, we have to cover our services somehow. Taxes are not something that our citizens nor I like to pay. And increased fees is not something that I like to pay either. However, I like to be, be assured that my city services are going to be there when I need them. And staff has laid out a, a way to support needed services that directly benefit our citizens and that funds will be allocated towards roads. Without safe roads, our, safe and operable roads, our citizens are going to incur a heck of a lot more expenses in maintaining their vehicles. They're not going to be able to get in and out of their, their houses, onto the main thoroughfares. There's difficulty in getting the safety equipment, you know, our, our police and our fire departments to them in a time of need, if, if our streets have deteriorated with, with potholes, et cetera. They're, they're getting other, other areas of, of service met. So while I agree that this is not a good time to, to add additional fees for 2021 and 2022 in the form of, of taxes, it's never a right time, you know. The last time we increased our utility taxes, we did not get an outcry from citizens. And again, it was a bad time. It was just right after the last recession hit. People didn't notice until almost a year later that the, there was an increase in their, in their fees. So I, I'm not so sure that our citizens are necessarily attuned to, to those things. Not saying that we don't educate them that this is coming, but, but if we keep kicking things down the road, we just compound the issue that, that is there. If council wants to take some time to, to discuss this and defer it to the 2022 budget, I'm, I would gladly go along with this, but we do need to address it, and we need to address it sooner rather than later. So that's just my, my opinion at this point. Mr. Faison, I noticed you had your hand up and wanted to make a comment. We have five minutes to go on our, our extension.
I'll be very, very brief. One, I'd like to remind you that the city has not done a property tax increase in basically forever. I think I've been here, can't even remember how many years now, and have it while the school district, the library district, you know, the other, the fire district all have. And so as a result, as the city manager indicated early in this discussion, we are down to core services. I don't know if those other jurisdictions are down to core services, frankly. And if we're going to talk about the effect on our residents, our residents voted down certain things, but they also have demanded certain things. And we're slowly but surely getting to the point where we're not going to be able to provide core services. We've identified that our police force, we've prefunded two officers. Those officers, those positions end in 2029. We'll be laying off two more in 2031, and then two more in 2033. So that's half of our police force. And, and you could say, well, we can lay off someone else. Officers are not statutorily mandated. You have to process permits. You have to, there are a lot of, we have to have a city clerk. We have to have a city attorney. We have to have a city council, frankly. So there are, we, we are down to core services. And as the Mayor Protem indicated, the more you kick this can down the road, the higher the monthly cost will be. So if you think about doing it $11 now, in seven years, it's probably $33 per household. So we've been really good about trying to plan ahead and do things very fiscally conservative. I think the fiscally conservative and most financially responsible thing to do for our residents is to act slowly, methodically, and surely. I know it's politically, never mind, I'll shut up there. Thank you.
So it sounds like we need to discuss this issue again at our next meeting so that we can, if council chooses to go that route, it can be incorporated in our 2122 budget. So given the lateness of the hour, I think we will table this topic and, and Mayor Protem and I will discuss it at our next agenda-setting meeting where we would land it on the agenda. In the meantime, if anybody has additional comments or questions, I highly recommend and suggest that you email and talk with staff about this so that we can make our next discussion worthwhile and hopefully come to some sort of a resolution as a council as a whole, so that staff can move forward in their budget decisions on this. So with that, we have two minutes left on our, on our extension. Are there any other items that we need to discuss in relationship to what we've discussed this evening? Councilmember Keel, did you have your hand up?
I, I, yes, Mayor, I did. I just wanted to just put a plug in for, I know we're, we're busy. The Form-based code. I don't, I don't want to get too much space between the last presentation and this.
It's on the agenda. Yeah, it's being looked at, so it will be there. Okay, any other items at this point? All right, seeing none, I am going to call this meeting adjourned. Good evening. Thank you very much. Bye, everybody.